Yeah, we try to get out early, early in the morning, get our water changed, get our projects around the outside.
I don't know, it was here.
In the house by ten thirty or.
I don't, I mean, I don't know where it is now.
It's too far.
Maybe.
Is there anything on?
Colleen knows, but.
Is there anything on?
Wow.
Oh, yeah, I don't want anything at the moment. So I got a back, that crazy idea.
No.
Yeah.
There's just that young, the guy downtown was doing the kindergarten interview.
So I should let him sit closer.
Yeah, I don't know.
So he can be on camera.
And in the future, we're gonna have that whole science.
Okay.
Just a, just a thought, I was like writing or talking with somebody and I made the comment that I, I didn't find competition to be as abrasive as something. And then I got thinking, you know, there's not that easy to animate, but there's the whole keep your friends close in here.
Yeah, yeah.
Closer, so.
So we just kind of hop, touch them around when they can burn a lot and they go to camp and they're like, for a week.
In fact, there used to be.
We, we've had, we have sixty acres.
The laws. There's that Supreme Court case, uh, Bremerton.
Everything.
Bremerton versus Kennedy. That some of the things aren't as far fetched as, it used to be that schools were pretty neutral. That there couldn't be prayer.
Yeah.
But now all that is being redefined.
So we're, uh, we're just live.
As in her mic or? All right, ladies and gentlemen, six o'clock, let's get the meeting started. Stan said pledge with me.
All right, guys, I would entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda.
I make a motion to approve the revised agenda as presented.
I have, I have a concern about the agenda regarding item three, hearing for redistricting, redistricting director districts. I don't think we have followed our policy eleven oh five regarding director district boundaries. So it says or is to be a redistricting commission. Do we have a redistricting commission?
Thought we hired it out, but not kind of the same.
Well, I think we need to know the answer to that and that we shall develop a plan, a proposed director districts within eight months of any of the following, and I believe we're doing it under receipt of federal decennial census data, and we're using the twenty twenty census. And that was published April twenty twenty one. So we would be way outside that eight months. So I don't believe we can go forward.
As in with the whole meeting or within that?
Oh, with the hearing for redistricting director districts only to that item.
So technically, we don't have anything until we have a first and a second and an agenda. And then when we get to redistricting, if somebody wants to make a motion table, we can do so until we get the answers necessary.
So you would like me to wait till hearing for redistricting to object to that item?
I assume that's what the hearing portion is for.
I, I can do that.
Am I nuts on that?
No, it's to hear any concerns at that time.
But if the motion is to approve the agenda and we can take it off, I think we can do it either way. So I can, I'll just raise the issue again.
This was, all right, so we, we had worked with, um, our legal coun- counsel, uh, Maki Jackson buyer on putting this on the agenda and the timeline. There was some flexibility due to COVID, um, and when that data came out. And so, um, dates were shifted. Uh, so yeah, we did use a consultancy firm, uh, Smamish Data Solutions um, to work on that. So it was a third party who developed it. Um, I have sent this to the board, uh, in advance, and so, uh, it is, it is coming due. And so, uh, this is under Maki Jackson buyer's, uh, recommendation. Um, and, uh, their timeline on it. Um, so I would, you know, under the hearing, we can, we can hear all those and I can, I guess, collect any of that information, bring it back to uh, Kirk Ellis, um, who.
It doesn't have to be finalized tonight.
No, that's at our next meeting.
So we can go ahead and run through it. When we get to it, we can hear concerns and we'll table it till we have the answers.
At a special meeting next week.
Fair enough. If I have a second then?
Second handy.
All right, we have for a second, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so hearing for budget twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, so Becky is going to, and for those of you that are in the audience, there are copies, um, of this presentation on the the table there, if you'd like to follow along or you can look at the screen too. So you met numerous times, uh, the purpose of this presentation is, is a public hearing in front of the public, um, obviously in front of the board also. But at the conclusion of the hearing, um, we'll take questions if there are any from, from the public, um, or from the board. And then the meeting, the public hearing side will conclude and then later on the meeting, um, if the board so moves, uh, will be the resolution to actually adopt uh, the budget. So that, that's the formal process. And I just wanted to show you the, the page. It's just a snapshot. The actual document that the state uses is called an F one ninety five. I'm not sure where the heck that comes from, but that's, uh, that's the formal document that, that school districts, um, use. And this first slide here is just a snapshot of all of the the funds, the five funds, and section A is the budget summary. Uh, top line is revenues and other financing sources. And then the second line, um, is the expenditures or the appropriation amounts. And again, in the resolution, those numbers are what the board would authorize the district to spend in those respective funds. Um, it's interesting that the board technically doesn't authorize the revenues, but that's just a formality of, of authorizing us to, to spend the appropriation amount. So that's what the resolution would, would show. And just real quickly, I have slides for each one of these funds, but, uh, the general fund, we're showing, um, expenses greater than revenues of four hundred and sixty nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen. Keep going back, Becky, if you would please. And then, then the ASP, uh, surplus of thirty four thousand, debt service eighty three, nine fifty five. Capital projects, and again, I'll speak more directly, but to each of these, but capital projects, we're presuming that all of the renovation and remodeling projects will be done next year uh, with all, all the elementary remodels. Transportation vehicle fund is the fund to purchase buses. And, uh, so I'll talk about that a little bit later. So just wanted to give a brief history of the enrollment, as you know, shown this before. You can slide that over a little bit.
Like, can you make the screen? Maybe, can you go to, maybe just go to one person on the, on the people in the meeting?
But this, this just shows that that's better. You can just, I want to kind of see the numbers more than really the graph, but there you go, perfect. You see, and, uh, this is the full-time equivalent, um, year-to-date average for the nine, ten school district, we had twenty eight hundred and fifty-four students. And at the end of twenty one, twenty-two, we had twenty-three, fifty-nine. Um, that does not include any virtual students that were included in the twenty-one, twenty-two count. And then the budget for twenty twenty-three is twenty-two, eighty-six. So you see, we can continue, um, to have a decrease in enrollment. That's just some history. The, the next slide, the state, um, asks us to do a current year budget and then to forecast enrollment and revenues and expenses for the next three years. And what I have done is used the twenty-two, twenty-three enrollment, and then I've rolled it over. In other words, the kindergarteners, uh, in twenty-three, twenty-four will, will now be first graders. First grader will be second graders. So I'd roll those forward and looked at five years' worth of history of, um, what, what the number have actually in, um, ended up as. So if we had a hundred and fifty-one, for example, kindergarteners is the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, and you'll see that is, is first graders, I've dropped them down to one forty-seven. Um, again, a lot of history with that. And again, this is not assuming um, any great growth, which, you know, hopefully there will be more kids coming back to school. Um, in the forecast, I'm not so concerned about, but it'll show certainly that, that we have, we're not over the hill with, with looking seriously at, at budget reductions and those kind of things, but it's a pretty dramatic, um, decrease of enrollment if the current trend happens. So certainly that, that is, that's a big issue that we'll have to look at in, in future years.
So I have a question, Craig. So for that twenty-five, twenty-six forecast, so for grade three, you, you projected it'll be a hundred and twenty-eight students. So that would be this, this year's incoming kindergarten class, is that right?
See, one fifty-one, one forty-seven, forty-four, yep, one, yes.
So we know why, or I mean, maybe you can tell me why you project that we're gonna lose, what's that, thirty-two kids?
Yeah, it's just.
One, so one, in just kindergarten.
So I, I have, um, five, I do five years' worth of, of analysis and the percentages um, are pretty low because they keep going down. Um, so that's, that's what my, um, model of, of budgeting shows as far as the enrollment.
And I think something this board needs to consider, you know, we had a great thorough presentation from Erica Hartlip earlier this summer as to why parents are opting out, but there hasn't been a further discussion. Clearly, you know, we're going to always every year have less money and be in a financial situation every year if we don't address why kids aren't, do we know how many kids have choice out so far for this year?
Sony does track that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, Selena, do you have that or is that just Sony that keeps track of that?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, four years. I guess last year we had two hundred and eighty-nine. I don't think so.
Choice out?
But for this year, we don't have the numbers.
I think something to keep in perspective when we're talking about, want to, to this enrollment issue. There was an article in the Yakima Herald last week, um, I think it was statewide about declining enrollment. But the Yakima School District with a student population of fifteen thousand, so substantially more than Prosser, had five hundred, almost double what we do with way bigger student population.
Choicing.
Choicing out. The state aver- the state average percentage is five percent and we're at like, what, fifteen?
Yeah, we're.
We, we need to investigate this and take it, I think, more seriously than I think, I would say lip service that was given.
We had close to a hundred choice back in. That's part of the argument, part of the discussion. And I think COVID was ninety-nine percent of it.
That's not what that.
I got a call from, uh, a group just the other day, uh, probably two weeks ago, and that's exactly what they had to say.
So I think going forward, we need to, I mean, we're either gonna continue to see decline, continue to see a financial situation. Um, we're spending a lot of money building beautiful new schools. Do we want to have them be empty and empty classrooms or we want to address, you know, and try to solve this problem?
The other thing in this model is I'm, um, no reductions in, in staffing. Um, just, just to, I mean, it's kind of like, this will be, this will be the worst-case scenario, I guess is what I'd say. So if we don't do something, you'll, you'll see, um, in a couple of slides, how dramatic with this, uh, reduction of enrollment and keeping staff the same, you know, in three or four years from now is, is gonna be pretty, pretty substantial. The next slide is what you've seen before. Sorry that it's so small, but it's, it's the expenses and revenues by program. And as Director Rayner has pointed out, um, we do have a lot higher indirects this coming year in twenty-two, twenty-three because of the federal dollars, the so-called S R two and S R three dollars. Um, which we get a pretty, pretty high indirect. So we have one point one million of indirects, which, as I've said before, for all intents and purposes, is revenue, is revenue to the district. So the bottom line is uh, if the budget was adopted as presented, we, our fund balance, um, our, our expenses would be higher than our revenues, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. You know, we have made some minor adjustments since last Wednesday of, um, some different, um, carryovers and, and some staffing, but substantially the, the bottom line is, is, uh, pretty close to what it was, uh, a week ago and, and like a month ago. The I guess that kind of speaks for itself. The four sixty-nine is, is where we've ended up. The next slide, um, goes over again, the general fund of showing the twenty-two, twenty-three budget and then the forecast for the next three years based on the enrollment that I just showed you. And, uh, the state has, has estimated, uh, it's not called the cost of living, it's called the implicit price deflator. It's the amount of money that the district receives per allocation for certificated classified and administrators. Uh, it's a two point one percent increase in the twenty-three, twenty-four, a two percent increase in twenty-four, twenty-five. And then I just picked out of my hat, a two percent increase in twenty-five, twenty-six, just to kind of be consistent. We don't actually know what the actual implicit price deflator will be until the legislature adopts the budget next, next year. But that's their forecast. So having said that, four point nine million and then is, is my estimate for beginning fund balance to start the year, you know, September one of twenty-two. Um, again, it, it takes, you know, a couple of months to close the books and to accrue all the revenue and expenses and, and all those things. But, um, hopefully it'll be higher than that, but, but four point nine is a pretty conservative number. But that number includes all of the restricted dollars too, like the state programs, the learning, uh, persistence program, um, career technical ed, uh, those are the, the big restricted, um, programs. And again, just real quickly on that, for example, the LAP program, uh, the district receives a hundred percent of the money during the twenty-one, twenty-two year that's been allocated, but we might not spend all of that. And so, but, so the money's in our cash account or, or fund balance, but, uh, not all of it has been spent. So there are limits on, we only can spend, uh, that money that's left over on that same program. So uh, as we talked about, like on the, on the, um, the policy dealing with, you know, minimum fund balance, we're gonna have to take out some of the restricted dollars because we don't really have access to that as far as, you know, no strings attached, if that makes sense. So uh, four point nine and then, you know, the, the taxes are the property taxes based on the, um, uh, used to be M and O, the educational programs and operations, um, levy. Uh, it's a two-year levy, as you know, um, I could have, I, I, I believe that I, um, assumed that there would be presumed, whatever, that there would be a continuing levy after two years. Otherwise, you know, the property taxes in twenty-five, twenty-six would, would drop down to to zero. But so I, I assumed a, a two dollar and thirteen cent per thousand, um, rate, just, just for, just for conversation purposes. The local taxes, those are like, um, the biggest dollar amount in there is E-rate, which is what we pay on our cell phone bills uh, that goes to the federal government and then schools and libraries can claim E-rate dollars for a technology type, um, expenses, mostly switches and those kind of things, um, internet charges, uh, that's, that's the biggest portion that's in the, in the local non-tax. The other thing that's in there is, we talked about this last week, was the traffic safety program that's self-funded. Um, so you see the, it's, it, it's dropping a little bit, and I think some of that is because I, I lowered the interest earnings each year because our fund balance would, would be lower. So not a, not a big um, drop in that. The state general purpose, that's, that's where the apportionment money comes in. And the state also has, when we do pass a levy, what's called local effort assistance, they match some of the, some of the levy. So the reason that, that that amount keeps going down certainly is directly related to our enrollment. Uh, portionment dollars are generated mostly by the enrollment and with the drop of enrollment, you can see that, um, that that, the revenue of that has, has decreased. The state special purpose, those are our grants. Um, special ed, these state grants, I should say, special ed, the learning assistance program, transitional bilingual. There's also our transportation operation is included in that. Those are called the special purpose dollars. The federal general purpose is our, um, pilt money that we receive from the federal government, pilt as payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, there's always pressure on that, um, amount of funding to, to drop, but uh, we're pretty consistent. The fifty thousand is a pretty, pretty accurate number of we, what we've been receiving. The state, or excuse me, the federal special purpose, the big massive drop there from ten points eight million to three point eight million is attributable to the S R dollars that we're projecting to spend all next year. So therefore it would, we wouldn't have that money for twenty-three, twenty-four. Patterson, um, district pays the district uh, based on a formula dealing with, uh, the EPO levy. Those are students that, uh, since they're non-high, uh, we, we can claim some dollars that Patterson pays us. So you can see for the budget, forty-seven point four million in revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three. And then the regular instruction for all the expenditure side, uh, that's basic ed, um, we also have like running start, uh, those things are, are in in that, uh, category. Federal stimulus again is the, is the dollars for the S R money, special ed, vocational ed, compensatory programs, those are like the title programs, migrant, um, we also have the, in the other programs are like national board certification. Uh, the teachers can receive, um, extra income if they meet those qualifications. Those are other programs. And the support services are, um, food service, transportation, and then um, what's known as program ninety-seven is maintenance and superintendent's office, business office, uh, rounds, custodial, those, those support services are, are all lumped in together. What I've done on the expenditure side is, is pretty much across the board gone with, for example, twenty-three, twenty-four, a two point one percent increase from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five is a two point oh percent and then two percent for twenty-five, twenty-six, just, just to, to be consistent that way. Uh, if this actually happened with the enrollment, as was projected, our fund balance would decrease, you know, two point two million, uh, in twenty-three, twenty-four, three million in twenty-four, twenty-five and four million in twenty-five, twenty-six. So certainly with, with less indirects for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're gonna have to, you know, keep looking at the numbers and staffing and um, certainly look at the enrollment. Uh, and Director Riley is, is accurate, we're, we're losing, as we've talked about before. You know, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, maybe more than that, um, in enrollment, uh, drop. So that's, I think that's probably one of the, the big challenges that, that we face as a, as a district. So that's, that's the general fund. Then the next slides, uh, just, oh, the next slide for the state, a number of years ago, I don't know how many years, five, six years ago, wanted to know how much um, material supplies and operating costs known as M SOC. Uh, the district is receiving and a district is spending, and there's a formula of of how much we're receiving. Um, so this M SOC includes basic ed, it also includes, um, career and technical ed as far as, as how the M SOC revenue is generated. And then so three point eight million, five fifty-one, six ninety-nine is the revenue and we're spending three point eight, you know, three point nine million. I think one of the things they might wanted to look at to see is if, if we were spending a lot of M SOC dollars maybe on salaries. I think maybe it was some of the history of this, but this is just a requirement, um, that we just report, uh, to the board, to the public, um, what our, what our basic ed funding allocation is and in those same programs matching what we're actually spending on M SOC. So that's really not too bad, to be honest with you. You know, thirty thousand dollars more. I mean, it's, it's, it's been a lot higher than that in, in previous years. So then the, the same pattern is for the next, um, four slides, capital project, uh, is uh, high school project is, is pretty much completed. We're finishing up the three elementaries and so Dan Purthoy is saying, you know, let's just, we got about sixteen and a half million um, left in the budget to spend. So that's what, uh, would be included in the capital projects. We do receive some rent for the migrant, um, property and then the pasture on O I E. Uh, that money, you know, certainly would, would stay, uh, in the capital project. So that's where the fund balance is continuing to increase just a little bit, but again, that's just forecasted for the, for the next three years after that point. The next slide is, uh, the fund is debt service. That is the fund that pays. The next slide is uh the fund is debt service, that is the fund that pays um. Interest and principal on any debt that the district has. Uh bond. Uh for all the the construction, the revenue source for that is certainly property taxes. Um we also have some loans. Through the transportation vehicle fund and we also had a loan back in two thousand and eighteen. Um to purchase some, you know, vehicles, um some trucks and suburban um. Badly needed uh that we that we loaned, got a loan for, which is known as a limited general obligation bond. Uh there really is, as far as the buses, the transportation vehicle fund transfers the money out of the. Out of that fund into the debt service fund and the debt service and makes the payment. Now, in speaking with Amy. Uh she would like to purchase uh two buses, no, three buses uh next year and uh. With the cash flow, we're gonna need to get another loan. Because we won't have enough cash flow, um she ordered the buses, they should be coming in December or January, and so. We're need, we're gonna need to get a three hundred and um eighty thousand dollar loan. Uh and then make the payments from the, again, the TVF to the debt service to make make the payment, so. The way the cash flow worked. For the vehicle fund is um. Not to purchase any buses in twenty three, twenty four. But again, go ahead and purchase a couple of buses in twenty four, twenty five, and and you'll see that on the slide here, but but this debt service um. Is meant to, again, pay the the principal and interest um. On any loans, the the general obligation loan and then the limited general obligation loans.
Craig, the buses that you said would be um delivered in December, is that we voted on in the spring to approve or was that in twenty eighteen?
The, say again, the.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm misun- misheard, we're gonna have a delivery of buses in December.
So we're gonna have delivery of buses in December of twenty two or twenty three, January of twenty three, but um. Those are these, that's the um. Five hundred and four thousand, those are the three buses that that are approved.
We did that in the spring or was that I'm or was that in twenty eighteen that it was in the spring, okay, thank you.
Yep, so we wanted to order those so that we could get a, you know, twenty percent discount or whatever from from the new prices. Well, that's the. Debt service fund ASP. Conversation on ASP is that, you know, the the at least for the high school, the students. Uh propose, you know, the amount of revenue and what they're gonna spend it on and. It's it's always been a lot higher than money that's come in and the money that's gone out um. When we do the year-end report, you'll see that, you know, the budget of, you know, eight hundred thousand and I don't even wanna guess how much. We actually brought in, but but it builds capacity is is one way of looking at it, uh. The board would authorize the the seven sixty six as the as the expenditure and certainly we can't exceed that money. But we can certainly spend less, uh again, matching matching with the revenue there. Uh the budget would be for uh ASP, if I could find it real quick. Basically, they have a surplus of thirty four thousand, um that's that's what the budget is for. For twenty two, twenty three. And there again, I just did the two point one percent for twenty three, twenty four increase. Two percent for twenty four, twenty five and two percent for twenty five, twenty six, just presuming that that. Everything's copacetic that, you know, nothing has really changed. Um those are how those those numbers came across. The last slide is the transportation vehicle fund. And. Here's where the the state actually where uh where it says revenue, state depreciation. That amount comes in August thirty first of every year. So with with the buses coming in December or January, we don't have the cash flow um. To pay for those buses, the five hundred and four thousand, you'll see down there bus purchases um. So we do need to get that loan, uh we'd have ninety seven thousand at the end of of uh next year, you know, August of twenty three. And then we get, you know, pretty healthy depreciation in twenty three, twenty four, these are all estimates. Based upon um the buses that are being depreciated, most of them are over an eighteen-year life, I believe. And then pretty good healthy amount at twenty four, twenty five. And then purchasing um some buses in twenty four, twenty five, you'll see the four hundred and twenty one thousand. And that would, you know, at least we'd have sixty thousand in the bank in our fund balance at the end of twenty four, twenty five, so. That's that's kind of the the plan, uh. What we don't know is. There's some conversation about electric buses that we could get maybe some grants for um. You know, they're outrageously expensive. And you gotta build, you know, charging stations, you know, all that good stuff and.
What what Amy had said to me was they would help, I guess, a great deal with the charging station. But there was literally one route for every one that would be acceptable for a. And that was it, that was, there was one of, where we run sixteen routes.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, anyway, just stay tuned, you know, I mean, I, she's not saying we're gonna, you know, do this, but. There's a conversation about that, the interesting thing though is if if they did fund, I don't know, you know, half the bus or whatever. We get depreciation on the full amount, so that's, you know. One of the good things for, you know, say the bus cost, I don't know, four hundred thousand, I don't know how much, you know, an electrical bus, and say that. The state paid half, or the EPA or government feds or whoever, and so we ended up paying two hundred thousand, well. We'd get depreciation and recapture on the four hundred.
Over how many years?
Eighteen.
That's, are you sure it's eighteen on an electric bus?
Well. I'm not.
Yeah.
But that's that's the state's current. And and again, Jason, just not to complicate things, but. You and I, when we buy a machine, we get to depreciate what we paid for that machine, right? The state um changes the depreciation dollar amount every year. So it's 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 a pretty complicated formula, I've tried to do an Excel on it, but I just got frustrated and stopped, but. Um but these are pretty reasonable, I think, uh estimates of. Of what depreciation should be. For the next three years, but.
Question on the. If we need to take out a loan to cover the five hundred and four for this coming year.
Yep.
Um. Can you take, instead of taking out a loan, can we pay it out of reserves and then have the transportation pay the reserves back?
Yeah, there would still need to be. An interest rate, um but.
What would be an interest rate to ourselves would be a lot better than.
Right, it'd be out of, you know, general fund or into general fund out of there um. You could, I mean, at least on the on the math here. Three, you know, you've got a ninety, you know, say a hundred thousand dollars, we maybe could do two eighty probably to at least make the cash flow. Um work out um.
Craig, Craig or Peggy, there there was something, and I don't remember what it was, where if we owed money on the buses, we could get. Was.
Yeah, that's that's a.
But if we didn't owe money, for instance, if we borrowed the money from ourselves, so to speak.
There's two different payment in lieu of tax. Funds, the one that I referred to in the general fund um. Basically just is operational, just goes into the general fund. The other one is the state's portion of um, there's a there's a state portion. That if we have debt, that we can receive. Money that goes into our debt service fund. And so you have to have debt to do that, and since we have the bond. Certainly that's debt, we have these other loans, so we're not really losing any money on that um. We share with with other districts, you know, whatever their total loan balances are, we get a portion of that um. But again, uh when Dr. Tokature was here, we've had, there was conversations about revising. That formula, not from us, but from the federal government wants to revise that and and maybe, you know, potentially either get rid of it or lower it, but. Uh there've been, I know I've been to some meetings uh back then uh. But nothing's changed yet, but there's always, you know, a new regime, a new administration, there's always conversation about. Looking at that formula and and maybe reducing those, but Peggy was the one uh years ago. That had had mentioned in her district in Patterson that. Uh they got some pilt dollars because of the loans that they had now. Um we could certainly do an inner inner district loan to ourselves and. I I had assumed um a five-year payback at two point six percent interest. Um of course, the interest is really low for for municipalities because it's non, it's a non-taxable um loan. The interest is non-taxable, so it's lower, but yeah, that's something certain we can we can look at. I've I've, you know, done a cash flow statement, I didn't include that in here, but just to make sure, get it high enough that we can cover that eighty two thousand dollar. Is what the payment would be. Uh and and I timed that payment in September, so we get all the depreciation. Uh in August thirty first and then. Make make one payment uh in September, September one, just to time that, but. That's certainly something to look at.
So we'll get the two twenty six, two fourteen, the end of this month.
Uh that's. A year from now.
In twenty two, twenty three?
Twenty two, twenty three.
Oh, it's in August.
It's in August of twenty three, yeah, so we're gonna get two hundred, I don't have the number in front of me, two hundred and fifty eight thousand. In a in a week, which will be for the twenty one, twenty two year. Yeah. But yeah, big depreciation in twenty three, twenty four, August of twenty four, the two seventy five. So that's really the end of the presentation that I have. Are there any questions, I guess, maybe first from the public, if there's any questions or comments, I we could, I could try to answer or make notes of.
We have them first.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments, these buses that you're getting in December, are those. The other ones that have had their ten years lifespan gone, they're not new ones?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, the the fleet is not increasing, we're gonna remove some of the older buses.
Good, good, and I've also got another question here, I don't know, maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but I'm looking at staff count. They're not gonna change projected from right now to twenty twenty five, but if I understand this correctly. Expenditure, regular inspection, that feature salary, correct?
Correct.
How come if the teams aren't changing, I go up by one point three million, are they, that's a big raise for staff?
That that would be the the, if the numbers work out, um we can find the sheet here. Is it two point one percent of that number? Instructional staff.
Yeah, in the expenditure, regular inspection, nineteen million, eight hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, so I so I just think, I just increased. The nineteen point eight by two point one percent and then another two percent and then another two percent, so. Again, the.
Saying that's gonna be cost of living rate?
Uh huh, that that's what the state of Washington would would pay us. Yeah, but again, if we're in a, you know, a three million dollar hole, it's not realistic to keep the same number of staff. But we haven't gone through that exercise of.
Right, right, yeah.
How many and what it would look like and all that, so.
Well, on the flip side of that argument, as he's figuring two plus percent, anybody who turns on the news knows it's gonna be. A lot higher.
The cost of living?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, eight, nine, ten.
Uh, yeah.
Maybe you're gonna keep up with it, the rise salary, uh which. I understand, it'd be pretty unrealistic, nobody else gets that from the race. I mean, you just buckle down and eat more beans and rice, you can go there, Peggy, you don't get to. Um when you guys was going through trying to figure out on the budget, uh we just said, let's talk about our assets, you know, like the property and the things that you could sell. Did you guys just talk about them or are you just gonna do anything about it? Is that what?
Those have to go into capital projects. So if we were to liquidate any of those, that goes back into, it it can only go towards buildings, it can't go towards staff. And so we could liquidate them, we could put some of that money in uh towards our FICR. The issue with that is is that we're trying to predict the future, we don't know if roster's gonna grow. They're saying that new homes are gonna go in, and so what will the needs of the district be in fifteen years? If I had a crystal ball, I could look into it and tell you exactly what the right, there you go, the right thing to do was. But it's kind of, we're in kind of a holding pattern, what we do know about land is that. If we were to liquidate it, when we do need it, if there were an increase in numbers, it's probably gonna be more expensive than the land that we just sold. Um and acquiring parcels are, you know, pretty difficult of the size of, you're looking at fifty to seventy acres. For a school or a campus, so like for a high school or something like that, and so that really starts to, you start to have to. Uh broker conversations with um farmers and. Uh agriculturalists about some of your farmlands so we can build a school outside of town. Um and then zoning and everything else that goes with that, and so um yeah, it's it's not a, it's not straight across. Um that was an initial conversation that we had my first year here when we were anticipating uh large cuts due to McCleary. Is that what assets do we have that we can sell, now beyond that, we do have. Uh we have surplus lists every year of old computers and things like that, typically people aren't, you know, knocking down our doors to buy those. Um so old textbooks, things like that, and so, yeah, so so um. The idea of liquidation of stuff is, you know, it's it's tough because it's not dollar to dollar where we wanna. They're not greenbacks where we can just spend on anything we want.
So you said you can use it on our, on the FICR station.
Yeah.
Isn't that something that brings in uh money to this community?
It is, yeah, and so that revenue, the trick with that is is that if it's a student event, that money goes into ASB. Which students have acts, you know, students have to give approval and with ASB specifically, you can't buy permanent fixtures, so. ASP, ASB couldn't fund whiteboards or things that were curricular, they can only spend it on extracurricular items. And items that would be movable, so it can't be a permanent um piece for the for the district, so. Um so it it is for student money for student activities, we had talked about at one point um. With the new uh new baseball field in the lights, um and even developing uh our athletic fields. The ability to have tournaments and to rent um district fields and and kind of our pro, you know, like. Have have tournaments here, we're AAU and things like that, that was one of the concepts behind adding the gym here. Is that, you know, it would give us the ability to do all sorts of things um. That, holding those tournaments, if they're linked with school, does bring money into the community, hotels, restaurants. Um things like that, coffee shops, right, um it it doesn't bring, you know, if you're gonna rent your facilities, it's. Tough to make it workable if you're gonna, you know, charge a rental fee of fifteen thousand dollars per for use and. You know, by and large, the funds are that we put on here with tournaments, things like that are for our students. Um so we're not charging rent to ourselves.
I have a question on what you started with Matt, maybe it's a question more for Craig to answer. Why wouldn't that money go back to the fund that was used to purchase the one? They came out of the general fund to purchase the land. Why would it have to go then into the capital budget, wouldn't it go back to the original fund?
I mean, we could get our bond attorney to answer that question, but I believe that it's an RCW that said. I mean, we could get our bond attorney to answer that question, but I believe that it's an RCW that says if it's capital in nature. It it stays with the capital, but that's probably a great question of, you know.
We get Jim McNeil.
Right.
Of uh, Foster Pepper.
I was gonna maybe ask him about the inter-district loan.
Was it Foster Gray?
No.
Garvey or something like that.
Cause at least to hold a whole nother conversation, if it's possible that we could liquidate some stuff to increase our budget.
Well, I think, you know, I I don't disagree with any of these comments, but we don't have a structure yet. To have the conversation about liquidating anything, because we don't know what we need. And we need our FICR fixed, we all can see that when we drive by it. Um, we can look at a ton of other facilities. But we haven't had that strategic planning exercise so that we can pinpoint exactly what what these things need, what they cost. How much time it'll take, and then if we decide to liquidate, to pay for stuff like that, then we have that conversation, I, we, this keeps coming back. And and hopefully, you know, within the next thirty days, we can have these strategic planning discussions, and then, then we can start. Having these goals and achieve, you know, our goals, you know, accordingly, whether it's selling property or whatever.
I think if we know whether we can do it or not, that's, that's my point, can we, I mean, if it says no, but has to stay in the capital budget, then that conversation doesn't, you know, really happen.
But what's it gonna do to our budget if we sell the property out on O A? It's a one-time infusion of the doll.
That's correct. So I'm just wondering, can we do it? And where does the money go?
I don't disagree with that, but yeah. I don't, informational, yeah.
I need to know what goes in the car.
Well, we all need to know.
Let's get the, let's figure out what we, how we wanna proceed.
We don't have a plan, we're just chasing our tail.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So before we go any further, I screwed up and and I started hearing visitors after the second proposal, so would you guys please say and spell your name for the record? Yes. Yes.
Kathy Ripley, R I P B L I N G R.
Thank you.
Just maybe one more comment, I would, I would, I'd have to look, but I would think that. Um, the purchase of O A property was probably. Money transferred from the general fund to the capital project to actually buy it, and so. It probably was, I mean, you know, it's form over substance, right, I mean. General fund really bought the land, but the mechanics probably was capital projects, but.
Well, theoretically, if we decided to part with the church or the little piece of ground across from. From Keene River or any of them, they were probably all acquired the same way. So it's.
Yeah, it's probably just a technicality that. Paid for it on paper, but they didn't, they don't have any revenue source, so they had to get the money from the general fund to make the payment.
Anything else on the uh, budget questions, comments, concerns? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Well, it's about where we discussed. All right, well, if there's nothing else on that, we're gonna jump down to uh, redistricting. And I know we had a, an issue right off the bat, Elise, you wanna lead off?
Sure, I would move that we stable the redistricting issue, because there is not sufficient information to show that we complied with policy number. Foster School District Policy Number eleven oh five, so if we bring it back, can we please have a cover sheet? With information with a recommendation and showing how we followed our policy, that there was a redistricting commission, or in lieu of that, something else. And that, you know, we followed within the eight-month timeline, that we had received a federal decennial. Census data consolidation of the district, one or more districts transfer of territory to or from the district. Annexation of territory to or from the district, or approval by a majority of the district's voters of a proposal to divide the district into director district. So that's, that's what I think we need to know.
Okay, so we.
Can go forward.
So we have a first to table it, do I have a second to table it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor of tabling the hearing for the redistricting of boundaries, please say aye.
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 Yeah, you're right. Yeah, it is, it is, just for the, it is the purpose of just hearing any of those problems. Um, Elise had said, if, when it does come back to. To have a cover sheet, and I can work on that, but the purpose of this is simply, um, yes. Like, uh, like the budget, that, um, if there's opposition or if there's problems with it. Um, to hear those, um, and to take note of those, and then we can all, we can work on addressing those. But it's, it's not for the purpose of approving or disapproving the hearing, it's to hear grievances or issues. Uh, i- if it's about the process of procedure, if it's about the boundaries themselves. Um, you know, to to hear those and then to respond to them.
So technically, we didn't need to vote on it at all, just, we have our hearing, we have our discussion, and you have your homework. Unofficially, it was a four-one, which I guess is a relevant at this point, but.
Yeah, it is, just to remind the board, so we did work with legal counsel, we did use an outside consultant. Um, firm on this. Um, and this was started back with the census and, and it was a different board at that time. Um, and so I've, I've kept the board apprised as we've walked through this, by law, you do have to um, redistrict when there is a census. And so, um, I know Craig has worked on this and I, I've touched it multiple times, he's touched it multiple times. And so, um, we do need to change it and submit this information to the county. Um, and so it's, it's a, uh, yeah, by law, we're, we're required to do it, and so. Um, we did, just similar to the budget, we published it. Um, about this hearing, and so two weeks out, we've, we've had information, I know Selena's worked on that. Um, we've worked on a resolution for it, and so I can, um, I can work with our legal counsel on getting and addressing. Uh, that, that question and create a cover sheet for it.
And I think, you know, maybe going forward, in addition to having a cover sheet, always, like, maybe a proposed resolution to look at.
Yeah, I can, we actually have the resolution in the office, um, and we can send that to the board. In fact, Selena might be able to do it tonight via her email. Um, but we do have a resolution that we're. Uh, that we've crafted and worked on, and again, this has been, also been embedded by the lawyers. Um, so just to, for the board, it's not a willy-nilly process that I didn't. Sit down with a Sharpie pen and, you know, re- redraw that, there've been a lot of other people involved in this, um. Process, and if a guided, guided my hand to make sure that we legally are. Um, going, you know, doing what's required.
We did talk about using a better map.
Yeah.
Does it use all the same sort of.
I agree.
Colors from the same spectrum, so.
Yeah.
Just makes it apart better.
Yeah, and so, so there's a lot of pastels there. Um, in in addition to that, um. The, uh, there, there's a legal definition, but having something that, I guess, is. When we start looking at publish it, publishing it on our website, having something that's, um. Uh, user-friendly and that people can access, and so you. When you start looking at it, you look at it from a global snapshot, and it looks like, oh, it's cut into, it's like a pie, it's cut into all these categories. But something where you can really break it down and say, oh, you know, I live on Margaret Street. This is who my director is, this is who I can call, um, this is who's in my district. Um, so I, I think that too, to say, you know, there are ways that we can make it more accessible and user-friendly to our public. Um, and with that, uh, I, I think that. Um, yeah, accountability is a group thing that, um, when we, it's not just, it's all of us, right? So people should be able to reach out to us and ask questions. Um, so, you know, putting our names on whatever map and. Having a more user-friendly version with different colors.
Right, anything else? Anybody else got any questions? So now's when I'm supposed to read the protocol for addressing the board in the hearing, is there anybody else? Did you sign up, Becky? Was anybody signed up? It's all you.
All me.
All you.
I had a question, um, last year, before the end of the year.
Do we, let's have Becky, I know you're gonna love this, we have a special place for people to come talk, it's a special desk. That way people online can hear you, Ms. Jensen.
I can hear myself just fine.
We know.
So. I don't do this very often, I'm not really comfortable, give me a room full of coffee people and I'm all happy. Um, last year, towards the end of the year, uh, the girl that worked for me. Um, was not working that day, but all of a sudden, her son showed up in my coffee shop. Now somehow he managed to get, and I can almost figure out how he got out of the school, because there's only one section. Near the park that does not have a fence around it. That's the only place that Drake could have gotten out. He got nervous, scared that he's gonna get into a whole lot of trouble. And, um, I also know that he likes to procrastinate, so figuring out what he should do next, he walks to my shop. I'm happy to have him there, that's not a problem, most, I adopted this thing several years ago, when kids show up in my shop. If I get them in there, I call the school and I let them know I have them, I don't really care how long they stay at my shop at all. The problem with this one is, is he's a fourth grader, I believe. Now he's gotten out, he's walked past two. School employees who saw him, never said anything to anyone, he walks to my shop. I argue with him a little bit about calling the school, fi- I called his mother, he was probably at my shop for fifteen minutes before I finally called. Jody Saban. And told her I had one of her students, and she about lost it, how did this happen? Why do it, why am I just now finding out? I don't know who the teacher is, I don't know how it all happened, except for somehow he. Slipped between two teachers at one time. What I wanna know is, my granddaughter is gonna be going to that school next year. Because she, with strands being worked on. She's a kindergartner, the thought of her getting outside of that building and trying to walk herself to my coffee shop. A kindergartner, possi- at least four intersections. And I don't know if you've all walked in that intersection there between, um. Uh, El Caporrel and Chapman and Lamson and whatever. I can tell you that I have almost been ran over numerous times walking through there, because they just don't look. And I'm a big person, a little bit bigger than I should be. These little guys are little, it really does concern me that. These kids can get out of that school. What are you going to do, or what is, what is the plan to make sure that doesn't happen again? Is there an alarm we can put on that door? Is there a guard that we can put on that door so that these kids can't get past it? It's a big concern to me.
Actually, the discussion came up last meeting, because of the fence, finishing the fence. I don't know where we're at on that.
We decided. We can, yeah, we can, so there's, I'll tell you kind of the evolution of it. There was one time where when we talked about it being a swing school. We were going to fence the entire thing in, right, um, that's against city fire code. Um, and even at that time, there were some board members who said, we should do it anyways, right? Let's shoot, let's just do it, the worst that's gonna happen is they'll call us to pull it down.
Right.
Um, I do think that, uh, so we didn't end up fencing the entire thing in. As a solution, we have done temporary fencing, the difference between that is, is that if there's a fire, temporary fencing. You know, you can kind of get out.
Right.
From, I don't know if we can do that, it seemed isolated to certain. Parts of that campus that we could use temporary fencing with. Um, I do think that, like, plastic fencing, alarms on the doors, things like that, that it'll trigger it. Um, or even there's notification to an office. Um, I mean, there is, there's tons of solutions out there tech-wise, uh, like even a Ring camera, right?
Something.
That like, people are putting on their door that if a student approaches, it ding ding, and starts filming them. As they, you know, go out, but there are lots of small, simple solutions that are in the probably hundred-dollar realm, um, that we can look at.
Well, it starts next week.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'd kind of like it to be next week.
Sure.
Because.
Yeah.
I don't want.
What was that?
And one of them has an alarm.
One of them, the, one of the park has an alarm.
The one by the MPR does not.
Which I'm assuming is.
That one doesn't have a fence and closing it, so.
Did you, who'd you work with, Brian? Okay. Yeah, so.
The, the temporary solution until there's more, more of a permanent alarm. Um, I have them, have them around my house. Which are the, uh, motion-activated bells.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, Mrs. Pumbers' class is the closest to the MPR doors. She'll have one of the bell ringers there, the motion ejector will be put by the door. When it goes off, she's aware, she's, I mean, right there, next to the first classroom.
So there will be something in place.
Yes.
When school starts.
It's between the gym, the back gym entrance and the.
To be honest, all of the exterior doors are going outside of the fence, we're gonna have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Grandma test proof, that's right.
And I think, and, and tell her she's gotta stay.
There, there was, we had multiple, um, multiple cases of this last year, and we tried to deal with it case by case. Right, of, uh, we had one classroom, I think it was like the old bandroom, where kids would just bolt out. And, uh, so it's been a problem-solving, um, kind of loop that we've encountered in certain things. The, the building wasn't designed for elementary students.
Oh.
Um, and it's an antiquated building as is. And so when we start talking about single-point entry and stuff like that, these buildings were designed way before that. And so there are a lot of, um, access points and entry points, and of course, there's security. Components there too, about like, there's so many doors that an intruder could, you know, come into one of those, but. Like I said, I think that there are many practical solutions. And kind of that whole inexpensive realm, and we'll, we'll try and develop multiple supports. Sounds like Kevin is, uh, already on it, but we're, you know, we're looking to fencing or something also.
I meet with staff tomorrow for our, that's a bold, some people wanna call it, uh, safety protocols, things like that. Um, one of the things is rostering, this is in the big, larger campus, it's whenever your kids go or come back. When they come back into your classroom, making sure you roster those kids.
Yeah, and I think that, part of, part of that was that the. PE teacher had the kids, she counted, when she took them back, the teacher that took them back did not count. Nor noticed that that desk was empty.
And I, Jody, Jody shared that with me, so, uh, the story book is also gonna be told, staff. Um, tomorrow. And talking about the, the ringers and things like that that are set up, the teachers that will be responsible for hearing those or in that general area. The door going out to across the street, my, my concern is, it's two, because they're gonna be the.
Playground.
Playground, right, the park right across the street.
Yeah.
Um. And I think rostering, when they go to recess, they'll be walked to recess, they'll be walked back in. Um, especially, I am, the teacher will be picking them up, walking them, two specialists, but. Still, like, the older kids, I'm gonna go use the restroom and. You know, that, that type here, so we're just gonna have to do a, a very good job rostering when those kids come back in. Plus the, the bells, the motion-activated bells.
Yeah, but I'll be checking, because. Not just for my own granddaughter, like I said, I, I care about all the kids and it, and. I, I just don't want any kid lost for any period of time. I mean, if he's inside the school, that's one thing, but you still lost him, you gotta find him. If he's outside the school, that's an even bigger problem, because I don't know if you've all noticed or not, but we got some weird people showing up in town now. Not just me, there's a bunch of weird people. And I find them out back of my shop all the time now. There's like, they're just walking around. There ain't nobody I wanna be mixing with, nor my grandkids. And I usually don't get too involved in everything because I have the store. But when it comes to my family and my grandkids, there's gonna be a problem. And yeah, so I'll be checking on you next week when school starts up. I'll be looking for that door. I'll be bringing coffee. Strolling around. Thank you.
Coffee's always welcome there.
Thank you very much.
That's the old high school they were using it for the elementary kids.
Yeah.
There's, yes. Heights Elementary was in there and, and he goes to Heights.
When Craig and I actually, when they were building this school, we were coming back from a construction meeting. Um, and this is back, high school kids just walking out, right? And uh, I remember we were in my car and chase these kids down to. It was that little taco shop, Miranda's or whatever. And so we followed them in there. I hadn't, I hadn't actually been in there and um. You know, there was a whole slew of them. There was probably like six kids sitting in there waiting for a taco. And so of course, when they saw Craig and I walk in there, yeah, we were, you know, chased them around the block and then finally ended up there. And unfortunately, they took off and so I think I ordered a taco. I felt bad, yeah, felt bad that I ran off their business, so I was like, yeah. I'm fat, I'll eat a taco.
No, they, I, I've had kids come from the high school, come in, I just take their name, I call the high school, I say, I have them here, they're not causing any trouble.
Be dealt with that punch card issue. You remember that?
Oh yeah, that was another one. That was a whole nother set of kids. That's a whole nother set of girls. They got away with a little bit for a little while. For a little while. They don't come anymore. I scared them off. Thanks for listening.
Anybody else? Yes.
Are there anybody online?
We have at least one asking for online.
All right, tell them to hold up.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you.
Um, well. I don't have kids on the district anymore, but it's my community. And um. I was listening or. About a few weeks ago about the Boys and Girls Club and stuff. And it came a concern that if we have, um. I don't know if it's decided, I was looking, thank you, Mr. Ellis for contacting me and informing me. But uh, I still have a few questions about the, how it's gonna be handled and um. I know there, the districts have different policies. And not, it's not a genie that I can ask, I wish those petitions, hopefully, um, we have a good. But um, but um, my question is. The after school activities that um, the club offers. If for any reason, it's gonna be affected. I'd like to know if you have options. For um, the kids that attend because I was talking to Mr. Cisneros the other day. He told me that uh, they already have eighty seven kids registered and they just have um, limit of eighty. So I was like, okay, um, my son graduated in two thousand nineteen, that tells you. I, I had a help a few years back. And it was important for me. I was a single mother. I didn't have anyone to help me. The club was there, so I'm sure that there's people depending on that kind of um, support. So we have many, my community, the Hispanic one. Um, need a lot of help. We don't have that great income that we can. Spend too much money on babysitting and the club offers great um, activities. So I, that's my concern and I just want you to consider it. Because. I'm not just Hispanic, I know that that whole community needs.
Yeah, I can speak to that for a little bit. So um. We, we like the Boys and Girls Club as a partner. In fact, our visions run parallel in what we want for kids. Um, so we've signed a MOU, um, and it's an intent to bargain a long-term lease with them. So the details of that um, are something that we're uh, currently trying to sort out. Uh, we're working with our legal counsel on doing that. Um, and so they, currently they're recommending that we have that plot surveyed. So we can really define what in the lease agreement. Uh, what kind of parcel of land we want, because it could actually be that. In the agreement, we um, talk about the sale of that land to the Boys and Girls Club at some point in time. So in, in, in addition to this, um, there are other stakeholders within the conversation. The board will be involved and they'll have to approve it. But also our insurance company and our insurance provider. So it is public land, um, you know, school districts are community property. And so um, we do wanna, you know, be mindful of our public and how we're serving our public and then. There's just no way to kind of predict. Um, what the future holds, is, holds as far as our enrollment. So we are working towards that. It is a busy time of year for us, um, where we have. The start of school and things like that. And I, I know that the Boys and Girls Club, they've done a fantastic job, so much so that they're bursting at the seams. They continue to have kids and, and they wanna serve them, but may not have the, the space to serve them. Um, and so, yeah, we've, we've worked with them on uh, providing access to the white church. Um, but yeah, we, we are working in that direction. So. Uh, I see that, you know, I see a lot of good that the Boys and Girls Club does, um, and I think we all do. I know that. Uh, Director Riley is doing a, the Dunk Tank fundraiser forum. Um, I think I was, I had done a salsa eating competition that Deanna. Got me roped into where I ate hot sauce with them. And so, um, yeah, they do do a lot of great for, great things for our kids and so. Uh, we appreciate them and we're gonna work to increase our partnership and strengthen those ties.
I also want um, changing this up, yeah, um, half of the migrants, hopefully you can keep um. Uh, going to their meetings and stuff because is. They feel welcome when you're there.
Yeah.
And uh, even that I'm not um. Pretty well, I still in contact with them. I am very grateful about everything they did for my family.
Yeah.
The district too, and uh, because. I know it's, it's not easy. We are a very diverse community.
Yeah.
And you have to help everyone, or most of you can, I know you cannot help specifically one person. But the general uh, community receives your help and your support and.
Yeah, it's, tho- those are great, those packed meetings are great evening events. And um, since I've been here, they've uh. Kind of put a little flair on it. They've made it more kind of, um, I'll say culturally relevant. Uh, I think we were, at one point we were feeding them like chili cheese dog, so. Now, actually there, uh, they've catered it out and done. Uh, food like carnitas and tacos and things like that. So they, they have really great food, um. It's on a Friday night and so I know that at the end of the week, and that was part of the move there. Is that our, our parents, our migrant parents are hardworking and they've been out in the field. A lot of times all weekend, it's Friday and they're exhausted and so, but trying to create a space and a venue. That we can treat them well and engage them in this conversation about the education of their children.
Well, the past conference, I um, mentioned you. The support that you had and that you're present there, uh, your presence. And um, I just, I thought, hopefully you can keep with that and I really appreciate your time.
At the last one, uh, my wife and I had got the opportunity to sit down with some kids and play Uno. Um, I lost, I'm usually pretty good at Uno, but.
Uh, just um, I was wondering how to. Have um, easier access to the information you have. I don't know, like a bulletin page or something that. Is easier for uh, uh, um, my grandparents to read. Because many of them, many of us don't speak very well English. I, I'm learning, still learning, but um, at least you can understand.
Yeah.
But um, many of them are in the process and um, I always ask um, accessibility for them.
Yeah.
Because um, we need to know what's going on in our district and we're a good portion of the community. So it's good that they learn to be involved and when they see the information is. Like to their access, to they can read. Maybe they're gonna be more involved in the programs and the schools and the communication with the teacher, um. My experience was that when I had a problem with one of my kids. Communicating with the teacher was the difference.
Yeah.
Uh, so we want that for every student, but they feel a barrier that some of you don't have.
Yeah.
And that's why I dare to come and please ask you, keep the support.
Yeah, in fact, I met with Eric Larez just this week and he, he has this big document. It's a service provider document as far as. All the services we offer in migrant bilingual. Um, it was, it was like seventy seven pages and so we're working on trying to make it more accessible and create kind of a hot sheet. Um, that parents can access and really. Um, really having some of that be user friendly. Um, my experience has been particularly in the lower valley. Um, that sometimes our, our um, Hispanic parents are almost too trusting. Um, of this system and so we do want parents to advocate for their students and to have a voice. Um, that parents are our most important stakeholder. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't matter race, language barriers. I mean, we just need to, our parents and then. Be there with our kids and so.
We are the same community.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
I want the same.
We're all Mustangs, so um, yeah, and so that's, that's part of that to try and get in for, relevant and important information in their hands and just. Increase, increase our voice and advocacy in that way.
Can you say your name into the mic for the record?
Angelus Durantus.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I see you again.
All right, if we have nobody else.
We have one on.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, sorry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Marcy Mercer and I just wanted to address the board. Um, to request or to provide um, some training and support to. Um, Annika Schroder, who has assumed the role of. The PHS Counseling Office Secretary. Annika started this new role August fifteenth. Um, and, or around then, and she is doing the best that she can. Um, but she has received minimal direction on how to do this new job. Um, Linda Ledesma, who, what, who last held this position. Is not able to train her. Sean Schultz in our technology department has helped her with some of the technical skyward pieces. But as you know, um, Sean's department is also short-staffed. Um. When I addressed the board. Earlier this year, I and many others expressed how crucial this position is. It drives so many of the basic functions of the high school. Um, Annika is going to be responsible for setting up courses. Class meeting times and all of this drives attendance. And very importantly, our enrollment counts. Also the teacher's ability to grade. I strongly urge you, in fact, I beg you to please provide Annika. With additional help, um, just as you did when we hired Carissa Garza as our payroll clerk. Mrs. Garza was provided um, training and assistance from the ESD for a good period of time. Which set her up for success. If we want PHS to. Run smoothly and our enrollment counts. To be accurate and so many other. Very important things. Our district needs to provide adequate training to support Annika. As she needs it throughout this year. I believe Mr. Bailey has per, um, has officially made a request to this effect. And I hope that our district will support that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mercy.
Thanks, Mercy.
Thank you. Anybody else online or otherwise? We're good, all right. Well, guys, that takes us to consent items. I would approve a, a motion to uh, accept the consent items as revised. Okay, all in favor of approving the consent items as revised, please say aye.
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 All right, then we're on to action items as revised. First off. Would be vouchers which were not revised. Do I have a motion to approve them?
I'm making motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or concerns? Alyssa, you wanna lead off?
Sure. So, the very first one, um, four seats in landscaping for seven thousand eight, eight hundred seventy-six, and then there's a supplemental. On the back for another eight thousand. What part of the landscaping are we talking about? Here at the high school? Somewhere else?
This is at the high school.
Is it where we were placed on the side and that, I know we've had a few conversations about landscaping, but. It's not looking good. Whatever was replaced is dying. Was this recent work?
They did the work on the hill. The, not, not, none of this, but the hill, the, where it was previously native plantings. They put in the grass, and the grass and the rocks and the bark that are on the hill as you drive up.
Did we already pay them fifteen thousand or is this that money?
We paid them the first half and that's the second half.
Okay.
Yeah. They went a little bit.
What about along the side here underneath these windows? Was that replaced? Or is it going to be replaced? We've got a dead tree, a lot of dead shrubs.
I don't, I mean.
Yeah. All that, all that in front, the shrubbery in front will be a part of the warranty walkthrough.
Okay.
Yeah.
There needs to be a discussion about a different kind of watering system.
It's um. According to.
Whatever's there is not adequate.
To Bagley and our main instrument is the. It's the irrigation water, it's the, it's the cleaning of the filter has to be cleaned every day or every two days. Because of the debris that comes in the irrigation canal. That's the story, that's what I stole.
Are we still using old barrel screens or do we now?
I don't know. I don't know, we've.
That's.
Might be time to buy a couple of sand filters so they'll stay running by themselves.
Well, it's been so hot too that we do need probably some backup plans.
Yeah.
Um.
And they didn't, yeah, and they had a period of time where they had solenoids that went out that had to be replaced and. And they definitely had, well, we had water issues across the district. And, you know, finding a way to. Eliminate those. I, I, I know that the stadium is gonna be an ongoing issue until it's redone, it, just because. You have a very hi- hi- new high pressure system with old. Old irrigation that all through the stadium down to the softball field is, that's the, that's the issue they have reoccurring. Is it blows apart, the, it was put in in the seventies, it doesn't have the ability. It's just not, doesn't handle the pressure of the new pump very well. Um, the other issues they've had of just. Well, the elementary schools, you know, make the construction company hitting main lines, all sorts of things. There's just been. There's every year they're stunned, but this year's been a lot.
Okay, and I had a question regarding, um, this is Mr. Ellis's reimbursement for tuition. And I had some community members ask me as well, and I know this is allowed under your contract. So is this for? All the tuition? Is it one semester, Matt, and then?
That is a full-time semester, so it was nine credit hours.
How, how many more semesters will there be?
Um. Until I complete my doctorate. At least, I mean, so it's in there with courses. It's the same, same language as what's in a principal's contract. And our teachers actually have um. A five hundred dollar. Um, stipend that the new languages is that they can roll it into. Kind of a two thousand dollar um, increment account. But yeah, um, hopefully everything will go on plan and stay as track, but. Um, it's probably about a two-year program.
And you said that was for nine credits?
Yeah, it's a, it was a full-time semester.
And then how many credits do you need to get your PhD?
Uh, it's a EDD, but um, I, offhand, I can't tell you. I can look into it and let you know.
And then, are there, is there any like travel books reimbursement costs?
That's all, that's all um, costs that I will incur. That's all that's all costs that I will incur.
They're not not submitting reimbursement for this?
No.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions about vouchers tonight.
No, I had a lot of the same.
All right, well, if we don't hear any more questions or comments, all in favor of approving the vouchers as presented, please say aye. All right, so next we have emergency certificates revised. I don't remember whose name was on there. I looked at it earlier. Your name?
Two things I want to say on this. Um we we did what condition, but because of the program that he's in, he can't get the you have to get a verification from the college. They won't give that to him till October. So we're doing the emergency, so that will happen until he can get his certificate later. It's conditional. One correction, though, the Joaquin Rumble is enrolled in Washington State University. My apologies, I didn't review this before it was submitted. He just he finished at WSU, got his bachelor's there. He is now in W G U for his special education endorsement, so.
Thank you for the coverage. Exactly what we were talking about.
I'm all about the Kami and I are all about the.
All right, so all in favor of approving the Well, that's right. We didn't do that, did we?
I make a motion to approve the emergency certificate, revised emergency certificate as presented.
Jason, you have a second? See, I get all excited and just get flustered. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All right, next would be the conditional certificates.
I'll make a motion. We approve the condition conditional certificates. Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the conditional certificates, please say aye. Okay, now we're down to D. First reading of policy and procedure twenty-one sixty-one. Sped and related services for eligible students. Everybody had a chance to read through? Was there any concerns, questions?
I found a typo. It's a little typo. I found a typo on page one of thirty-five. The third from the bottom says the lower letter D may, I think it's supposed to be the district may. So I'm sure we can fix that. And then my question is, who is our sped director for this year?
So our plan is to post a post for a sped director position. If we find a viable candidate, then we'll hire and transition. In the absence of viable candidates, Cindy Dean will be reverting or will be our sped director. We have narrowed her duties down in the chance that we are able to find somebody. And so we talked about kind of a position for her as a behavioral specialist. Part of that would be paid out of grant. It is a tricky time in the year. We're late in the hiring season. And so we're gonna cast a broad net and get it out there on to some national sites and things like that. But in the case that we don't, then Cindy Dean will be conducting that work. And hopefully with that plan, we can have it open and tell filled. And if that plan works, then we can continue to continue with it and execute it next year. If we don't find anybody this year, but kind of that transitional piece with her taking on those responsibilities for the time being.
And this is just from the first reading?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of policy and procedure twenty-one sixty-one. Fed and related services for eligible students.
Do you have a second?
You can do it.
I'll second.
Why just root your name? Okay, we have a first and a second. Are there any more questions or concerns?
One just came up. I apologize. And this is from the discussion last week, so I think we can vote to approve policy but not procedure under our board policy.
Well, I think like I I think it it allows us to approve a procedure. It doesn't prevent us. It's not required, but it doesn't prevent us.
Okay, right. And then another conversation is that we should include that.
Oh, yeah, I got that.
You take great notes, I think. Perfect. Okay, so yeah, that was my that was. Yeah, so let's go forward. Thank you.
So I've got a plethora of questions.
Yeah.
Mediation and resolution agreement.
Absolutely.
There's really nothing there, but so I guess I'm questioning what what is that?
Can you tell me what page number you're on?
It's on the very first page of the policy. It's the very first bold line. Doesn't really list anything. I don't know what it's for.
So it's it's a a process that involves our lawyers and it's legally binding. And so parents can file parent complaints and there is a process that districts can work to without it going to court. Districts can work to resolve through binding agreements. And so we've had a number of them since I've been here. You know, in in working with parents around, you know, maybe the district didn't follow the I E P. Maybe there needs to be compensatory services. Or the the parent has an issue with how things were conducted, the service of their student.
So I guess my question, would it be prudent for us to actually elaborate just a touch on that paragraph?
We could. Yeah, we could. It's a it's a basically a legal process that that the board is saying, we're gonna delegate you in tandem with our legal counsel to come to some resolution and agreement. And when you sign that, that's gonna be binding on the district will have to provide those services.
It's like an understood thing as part of special education, but maybe what you're saying is that that's not enough for people to really understand what that means.
Yeah, so spell it spell it out. Don't use jargon or whatever.
My concern is is that we can be, Matt has the authority to bind us into those contracts without the board being aware of it ever. So I think we need to include language or talk about language that says the board needs to be advised of it. You know, through an executive session or something before the superintendent has the authority to, you know, bind us into that agreement.
Maybe with the board's approval, they authorize a superintendent or designate something like that.
Yeah, so some of this, though, and I can get I can get more information for you about it. We start to, I mean, the board does have the right to know information, but we do start crossing lines into further information and stuff that I really can't share via email. And so it a lot of that stuff is is confidential in nature, like student I E Ps and assessment scores and things like that. And so it is kind of a curious situation that you know, you're saying, all right, you know, whether the assessment is is that I, you know, I have the basic skills in order to carry out the superintendency or not. Somebody does need to be the point person that the district says we're confident that that person has a general knowledge to the extent that they're not gonna get us in trouble, that they're gonna agree to, you know, make it right by the parents and you know, reduce the risk of us going to getting into litigation with the parents. Which oftentimes, in the case of sped law, it's a losing proposition for districts and so you're trying to broker an agreement to not do that, because districts typically do lose and in sped cases, so.
I have another question on the I think it's five, it's six and seven. Now, six and seven of the procedure. Looking over this, a lot of this referral process makes sense to me when it when it's talking about kids that actually go to our schools or coming into our schools. What I have a problem with is, you know, how do we how do we apply this referral process to to kids that aren't enrolled? In Prosser School District, number one, does that open us up for liability, number two? And I don't know how we functionally work this referral process with kids that go to private school or homeschool. So I guess clarify clarification on.
Can you tell me again what page you're looking at?
Well, it starts on page six of thirty-five. The procedure, it's on the procedure side.
I I mean, Matt can probably speak to this too, but I think this primarily happens more often with kids in birth, like our birth to three program, like kids that might not necessarily be enrolled in school, but may have some there's some reason that they are requesting or are asking for services because we do offer birth to three services. That's through the E S D and then our preschool services. So those kids aren't technically enrolled in our district unless they qualify.
But this procedure specifically addresses homeschool and kids that go to a nonprofit private school. So I I'm I'm curious how we can implement and override a homeschool and or a private school with this procedure.
Yeah, so any any and all of the resources that we have within our district by virtue of that student living in the district and their parents being taxpayers and everything else. They have they have access to any and all of those services.
But the way I read this referral process, and I'm I I don't know a lot about this whole program, but the way I read it, I don't know how we can have somebody within our district where we have, you know, we we've got our own kids with a lot of these things that we're gonna go to, let's just say, Sunnyside Christian and talk to their teachers and tell them they're doing stuff wrong based on how I read this.
Yeah, so they're talking specific to the case of say like a five oh four. So like, let's say if there's a blind student, right? And so we have somebody who can transcribe lay it rail or something like that. And so we can provide services in that area. So in in fact, there was, we do have a cooperative agreement with Patterson, and I believe we like shared a school psych and tried to provide and it was, you know, Peggy was a part of that, but trying to work with other districts or students who are from within our district and providing the services needed. So, because it, you know, public schools have access to a lot of these specialized services. Where if you homeschool your kid, you're not gonna have.
Yeah, I guess I get that part. It just the part where preferences, private schools.
But if the student resides in our district and the parent has asked for assessment or in order for a major referral to have the student tested, it would be for us to provide this service, it's not us to tell somebody else to do it.
We had a situation come up. Here's another example. That the student was a part of a private school. I think it might have even been Sunnyside Christian. And or, you know, I don't know if there's too many other private schools in the area. But the parent wanted access to summer school, right? They live within our district. By virtue of them living within our district, we can we can't deny that. So if they want access to our programs, they have access to our programs, even though they go through a different education provider. So we can't say, oh, you know.
Well, technically, we are required with Title One to provide equitable services, Title One, Title Two, equitable services to our private school students. So students that are from Prosser and there there's a private school that shows up on the list every year, but it's never been open. It's Saint Francis. It's never opened, but we have a handful of students that are qualified for Title One services through and attend Sunnyside Christian. So there's a formula and we I meet I we do I meet with Del Dextra. We do a private school consultation and there are certain things that we can purchase for Sunnyside Christian. We can't give them money. We can't, but we can buy things. For instance, it requested a reader pen, a pen that so electronic pens that you can go over the text and it reads for a student. They have a certain types of professional development. There's a lot of rules, like has to be non secular, all of those things. But it's not a lot of money, but it is some because they don't have very many students and they don't have very many that qualify. But we do, we do provide them some funding, depending on what it is. We have a consultation and they kind of tell me what it is they'd like to spend their money on and anything they ask for, we have to approve, basically has to meet the rules. If we had more, you know, more pub- more private schools, we don't, we don't have any in our right now that are on the list, but maybe in the future we will. But it's like five thousand dollars of our title one.
It's just like kids that live in our school district, but.
That are qualified. So for Title One, that's that percentage comes from free and reduced lunch, so they have to qualify.
And my only other question on the procedures on page twenty-seven of thirty-five. And it's a whole paragraph outlining students unilaterally enrolled in a private nonprofit school by their parents. Kind of this, a lot of the same questions that I had on on the previous, but I don't know. I, for example, the very first paragraph says on November first, to each year, the district will conduct an annual count of the number of private elementary and secondary school students eligible for special education. Who are unilaterally enrolled in a private school? I mean, is that is that possible? I mean, I know it's not impossible, but.
Yeah, it's possible. It's certainly possible, but that the special services director would have to, it's the same idea that me, it's basically the same thing. They've implemented the same roles that they do with Title One. The district's special education service directors will have a timing timely meaningful consultation with the appropriate representatives of private school. So it's kind of the same idea as Title One, and there would be some percentage of funding that would that that district would be the special, the private district would be able to access based on their enrollment if a student qualifies.
So do we just go off? The parent said we're pulling them out to send them to online or we're pulling them out to send them to.
Title One works is, and this is exactly how this is written for special ed is, it is our responsibility to initiate the consultation with a private school. It's not the private school's responsibility to come to us. So I initiate the consultation with Sunnyside Christian and we have our and there's a way that things are tracked and records are kept and for O S P I. And because and we cannot get our Title One funds without doing the consultation. So that to me, that looks like that would be coming for special ed as well. They would need to have a tracking of that and not to say, oh, yeah, we did it. They didn't want any money. You have to actually have a tracking of that. I don't know if they're if special ed's required to submit the same kind of documentation I am, but to me, that looks like if they're not, it's coming. And I don't know if we have any students that are qualified for services. We, I mean, we don't, there probably are. And if there aren't now, there will be someday.
So if we're talking about like Title One and the the stuff that you have to do for private schools that's kind of mirrors this? Like what kind of time like how many people are, what what kind of timeframe does it take for you to gather this information?
It's harder for the the school that shows up on the list but actually isn't open and then I call and nobody ever answers or I email and people don't answer. So for Sunnyside Christian, I emailed Bill and his assistant Suzanne. We set up a time. There's two forms we have to go through and answer a bunch of questions. It takes about a half an hour to forty-five minutes and then later on, you know, when there's something that comes up, we usually do it through email. It it's it it's not. I would say
It looks for.
A total of two hours. Now, if we had, like, if we were a district like up in the Tracy's where there's lots of private schools, it would take a lot more time. But we just don't have very many. A couple of years ago, the Montessori school in Richland showed up on our list for some reason, just one year. And when I called them, they're like, we don't have any students from Prosser, so but I had to document all of that, so. Yeah, the private school, the Saint Francis School, it shows up on the list and then it won't show up on the list, but it's never opened. It's Peter Tran was gonna open a school. It's never opened. So if the one shows up, the new one here in town will probably show up. It's not on the list right now. But if they're able to get established and going, I'm sure it'll show up next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any more questions or concerns on twenty-one sixty-one? All right, guys, hearing done. We have a first and a second. Should we approve this as the
All right, guys, hearing done, we have a first and a second, should we approve this as the first reading, move on to second?
Yeah, call for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're on the first reading of policy and procedure fifty-five fifteen, word for workforce, secondary traumatic stress. That's a mouthful. Have we all had a chance to uh to read through it? Then I get, I guess I would ask for the same thing, do we have a first to approve it as a first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All right, were there any concerns or questions or additions? All right, hearing done, let's uh all in favor of approving this as first reading, please say aye.
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 Okay, then we're on to F, which is the P E A contract.
Shoot.
Did I miss something?
No, no, excuse me just a minute.
I have enough problems.
She's getting the blanket.
It's the first time it's been comfortable and you're in like a mug.
I'm cold.
All right, have we all had a chance to read through this?
I think a motion.
Well, you might as well for Jeannie at this point. She picked a great time to wander off, huh?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I guess we don't need to, but. Is she?
Yeah.
She's cold.
You know what, we're fine.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To pre-prove the P E A contract as presented.
Yes, correct.
All right, all in favor of approving the new P E A contract, please say aye.
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 Since I've been talking about cover sheets all night, I think it would have been great if we had a cover sheet with a recommendation, especially since we got these eighty-two pages at three o'clock this afternoon, it's like a short, you know, but substantially different and what the recommendation is. I think that helps when we get things played, and I think it helps as a board member to get the Cliff Notes version, we could have that in mind going forward for best practice.
I agree with that. I will make a note.
I don't think you have to write it, Andy.
Well, probably not, but now it's getting written twice. All right, so we're on to G, which is resolution ten twenty-two, it's the twenty-two twenty-three budget adoption. Uh, we went through it earlier, are we all in a place where we're okay with it?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number ten twenty-two, the twenty-two twenty-three budget adoption as presented and revised, revised and presented, I guess.
But uh, we weren't approving this till next week, it had to be on a hearing twice.
No, no, so the budget, you can, the budget, you can do a hearing and adopt the same night. The boundaries, you have to have a hearing and then adopt it. But this is always how we've done it, there is a two week, you do have to post the hearing two weeks in advance.
Right, we have to advertise.
Wasn't that the thirty-first?
I, I advertise the public hearing for tonight. And typically adopted the budget the same.
But it is a resolution, so you need a roll call. In that case. She's halfway there.
I didn't.
She's got her gloves and mittens and.
I think we have a quorum if we want to do the roll.
Yeah, we do, do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Just to comment, Jason, that if, if there were concerns and the board didn't want to adopt this, it has to be done by the thirty-first. If there were, you know, if one of you revise it or whatever, you know, he didn't approve it, then, then we have a week to change it, but if it's and he's okay, then there's no issue with it.
I don't know why, as soon as he said that, I remember something about the thirty-first, but I.
I, I just said we have to have it passed by the thirty.
That might be, they all kind of blend. She getting close?
Yeah, she's coming.
I bet she's running.
Yeah, she's not, I didn't expect her to go immediately.
Something like a little awkward silence in the middle of a meeting. And everybody applause as soon as she walks in.
I think you could get roll call from everybody else that's here.
Yeah, I could. Lisa?
Aye.
Peggy?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And myself, Andy? Aye. And we're right back. Come on, Jeannie.
I'm gonna let Lisa know today, I dress code.
I know, I'm.
I didn't even.
I'm, I am breaking the dress code, scandalous.
Cause it's cold, it's.
All right, I'm ready to.
All day.
Jeannie! Oh, come on.
It's like you're going to a football game.
All right, so we passed the P E A contract, we're on to the budget and.
Okay.
We have a first, a second, and three yeses, we're just waiting for four yeses, excuse me, we're waiting for your, but are you in favor or not in favor of?
Aye.
All right. And that's taken care of.
You're welcome.
All right, on to discussion items. Uh, this is the equivalence equiv- equiv- Yes, what he said, credit opportunities, policy twenty-four thirteen. So these are both holdovers that we're uh continually working on, I um, I do believe that the board wanted um some input from administrators and staff on these. Um, but they're just on there for discussion items for tonight. Have we uh all had a chance to look at them?
We'll say on the equivalency credit opportunities, you'll have to have a process for kids, like for them to propose that they would earn credit for an, an experience outside of the school, but then you do have several workplace uh people in C T E that can supervise like workplace credit and then learn, manage a job and earning credit in that way, so. You already have the structure, you just have to do a little bit of formality.
Were there any uh questions or concerns recall regarding twenty-four thirteen? All right, so we're all good for this coming back as a first reading, next time we see it?
Aye.
All right, you got the answer on that one. So B, policy and procedure thirty-one twelve, social emotional climate. And I would love to bring this up, cause that's a good thing to do, but I screwed something up on my little computer and I. I'll just look at the little tiny square. All right, have we all had a chance to look through procedure thirty-one twelve?
Yes, sir.
Were there any questions or concerns, changes?
Okay. It's on the board pack, it's page one eleven and one twenty-three. Uh, under definition, it has universal design.
Yep, yeah.
Um. What, what exactly is that? Um, and it, it talks about removing barriers in the curriculum.
Yeah, so um, universal design is a way of um kind of developing or designing a lesson so that all kids can access it and benefit from it. Um, so it's uh, it's kind of, it's a little bit specific to, or it, it has, it's grounded in like special education practices, but actually it's good for all students. So um, that's what that's talking about, a structure that um or a format for instruction that all students can learn um and have access to uh the content.
Can you give an example?
Like a little hooey, we're, we're gonna make things easier until everybody can.
It doesn't mean that, um.
That's how it reads.
Coming to the um, coming to us, we'll review, in, in the next few years, this, the expectation from the state is we are using um that students are experienced in education and an inclusion model versus a pullout model. So um, we already are doing um inclusion instruction, we had a algebra class this year where students who were on I E Ps for mathematics and previously had been in a pullout mathematics course, were in Algebra One with two teachers, um, a special education teacher and a math instructor, and they worked together and it was quite successful. So it's about providing different types of scaffolds and supports so that all help students have opportunity to access the learning and not have to be pulled out into a different setting because um I think that we all know, is when a student becomes identified, or may, or maybe we don't, but a student becomes identified for special education, they tend to be in special education for the life, their career in education, and um and there are many, many of our students could be successful in the regular classroom with lessons that are designed to support them, we have to be able to access, help our students access learning, cause whether it's special education or, or language, or kids come from all different places in the classroom, and that's what it's really about. Making sure you're not just going, you know, I always sit here and do a PowerPoint and talk to my student, because that is not something that all students can access learning in that, that style, so, I don't know, principals, I don't know if you have more to add to that, but um, it's really about just having classrooms that are, that are inclusive, that our students can all be successful in learning and not have to pull them out and put them in a different room or their math or their writing or their reading.
I have a question on that, um, and I am totally with you in including them in there, but um, from my experience in the past of being in a classroom, there is some behavior like not, you know, and it's behavior that they know they're doing it on purpose, and then it just disrupts the class, and then your teaching just kind of goes down the drain.
So a lot of that's about helping teachers of learning strategies and ways to deal with that, and a lot of times behavior comes from kids struggling to access the learning, because if I can't read the paper, then if I act up, nobody's gonna ask me to read that paper. So there's, there's, and, and we're not talking, and, and not every student can be in the regular classroom and be successful, um, but we, we know that across the state and across the country, there's over identify, over identification for special education, often because of behavior. And behavior is not academics, behavior's a different issue that has to be addressed, so teachers need tools, we have to provide them support, and we have to have ways for kids, all kids, to access learning, so they don't get frustrated, cause a lot of that isn't about the kid disliking the teacher, the staff member, it's because they are, might be struggling with the learning, so it's a, it's, it is, it's a different idea, but, yeah.
Will that bring the learning of the other kids that are wanting to get going, just?
They're talking about, yeah, they're talking about doubling up in some cases, so like two teachers on a classroom. So like, when we were in Grandview, right, the student you were with saw a huge gain, in fact, I, I was just going through pictures and I saw a picture of him um, the other day, but they, yeah, the student you were with, you were able to show huge gains because you were doing reading on your own and you were trying things and you had a connection with that student, and he would outperform some of the Gen Ed kids, right, um, which, you know, and we both watched that and, and watched him kind of, his recall and all those things, it was amazing. But they're, they're looking at, you know, teachers who know the craft of special ed education and um know what's in the I E P as far as modifications and adaptations and pairing that possibly with the content area, somebody that knows content. Um, on top of that, using teaching strategies with universal design, so that um we teach in such a way that everybody has access, so like Deanna said, it's not a lecture, it's not, you know, it's walking through kind of a scaffolded progression of.
Right.
We're building on concepts and schema so that students can retain, so that everybody, all of, you know, all of our kids can experience that, and obviously the gains that that student had were based upon your specific work, not everybody, every student had somebody that cared and was willing to put that forth, and so what we're looking at is different models that we can get that success that are special population um, isn't, you know.
Right.
Isn't perform, is per- performing at a higher level than, than what they are, and so, you know, typically.
Well, thank you for that, but I had one student, I think it was Star Kingdoms, oh my, oh my shit. You know, the whole fruit basket was upset, and that student wasn't a special needs student, it was just a very.
Yeah.
So it.
Yeah.
I mean, I felt the teachers would just have me, you know, leave for them because it was like, so I'm just worried about that.
Yeah, no, that's a thing, so we've talked about that before, we're seeing students with behavioral needs that um, you know, we don't know if they should be diagnosed because of some of these behavioral interactions or, or not, and so, um, yeah, that, that's tough to distinguishing. Um, well, we had, we had a presenter around mental health, and so really, you don't, because of the pandemic, you really don't know what kids are coming to school with, and so they could have a whole slew of, you know, things going on, and that's really where we're trying to take, take deeper looks, the practice of education, where we're looking at social emotional practices, what's going on in the student's life, how can we support it? Um, how can we reduce some of those behaviors and actually get them back to learning?
And, and it's great because the other kids will help bring that other student.
We, I was gonna talk about it in my report, but we, we had training just, was it yesterday, Monday and Tuesday, um, for our elementary and secondary staff, specifically around that, those so social emotional supports and helping teachers build relationships with students, and we have students that are outliers that have some pretty, that, that need a person, specific person to help support them to be successful in school. Well, we have other, other things that um, and help, uh, helping our teachers with strategies, because sometimes um, they just need, they just need to know, think, think of maybe some situations in a different way, and building those relationships with students helps alleviate many, many, any, many issues that might belong, you know, might be disciplinary or behavior issues. Some students, regardless of that, need more than just what the teachers that will provide.
You, you've seen it, like, if, you know, you hear these things about like, oh, that kid, he's a bad kid, but when we talk with parents or even when we interact with our own children, it's like, no, he's not a bad kid, he just needs different supports. Like, so he does it when I ask him, or if you have a relationship with him, then he will do it, and so that's really what it gets back to, is that, you know, we're looking at behavior in a different way. It's not, you're a bad kid, and that, it's like, well, we, we need to meet your needs and maybe some different ways here to, to get through to you.
That's cool.
Yeah.
I was just gonna follow up and say that we're, excuse me, at the high school, when we're talking about inclusion, we're not just talking about sped, we're talking about our E L learners as well. And uh, trying to push those students into the general education classroom. Uh, that they're supposed to point out, so um, it has been in the past that our E L learner sometimes will not get the same uh opportunity to have electives because they have to take an English class plus an E L class. Um, and now with an inclusion model, they can receive their E L instruction in the language address classroom, uh, which opens them up to other opportunities as well. There are a lot to show us teaching, uh, incorporating co-teaching this year, so we still have a co-teaching, but we're also co-planning, so certain teachers have prep periods that they have in common with other teachers, and those specialists, if they're sped specialists, they will review lesson plans to see uh what's your differentiation look like for this particular student, if they're an E L specialist, then they will look at lesson plans for that specific uh need for the students, then so we, we meet the needs through, through co-planning as well.
And that's happening at the middle school as well.
It is also happening at the middle school, I will also say, um, director, I grew director in the rez, uh, we just worked yesterday. Uh we just worked yesterday on on our grant application as well uh to try and get more tutors. So we'll see what we we've been that grant or not. Uh but tutors to push into the general education classroom as well uh to reduce the numbers. So and you know, hopefully get. Closer to five to one um in some classrooms, you know, classrooms especially.
When I was, when I was part of the stack, we had some training. And uh one of my questions was that that sometimes they may misunderstand uh learning. With the capacity to understand the language. And then they said it was a big percent. So uh when they repot that area, they found that they needed to be included.
To differentiate between those barriers. Is it a language issue or is it a cognitive? Barrier, right? And so sometimes there's both and then sometimes one gets confused for the other. Um and then there's gaps in learning as well, right? And so to try and distinguish that, it's a it's a process. Yeah. Yeah, I've worked with, I've worked with um people that back in the seventies and eighties. Um with some of our migrant families that were staying here. Um they did just push them into special education classes because they were like, we don't know what to do. You know, the and at that time, the systems didn't have the capacity and weren't geared towards that. And so. It's evolved. I mean, we do have the resources now where we can meet the needs. It's not as, it's not as good as what it needs to be, but we're continually, I mean, education's getting better and meeting the needs of students.
My last comment. Uh thank you for all the information with. Instead of using a model procedure, would we not want to develop our own procedure that fits? Proster School District, not just a general, you know, a general procedure.
Cookie cutter. Yeah, so certainly. Um and that's where we we talked about uh procedures being administrative functions. We've also talked about um having teachers and administrators, right? It kind of uh. Develop a voice in developing it and what that work looks like. Um the trick there would be to develop it in the uh in such a way that uh we we speak about things in generalities. Um in steps so that if if the person who's leading it changes, that the new person coming in is like, well, yeah, that's. Laid out very logically and I could see where they were going with that.
Should we consider just uh setting this aside for now and doing it ourselves?
We can, um we can, there's.
How how much of this, how much of the cookie cutter is being voluntold and how much of it? Can we cherry pick and 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 write the way we want it?
Yeah, so there is, the procedures are meant to follow uh kind of. Um shadow the policy. And so, of course, you want to comply with law. Um and WASD does mo- model policies and procedures. Yeah, yeah, to mirror it. Um so, yeah, but the, I mean, this is only a preliminary discussion. Um these are all kind of works in progress and something start wrapping our mind around, including voice is always important. Um so and that that's been something that's brought up in the past.
You know, it's on our own plate.
Yes. I'm gonna say this is nowhere near. Way to come back from first reading. For a work session.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, sometime in the next couple of months, I think that's where it needs to go.
So really, well, really what's in front of us is a WASD sample procedure. It's not a policy, not there's.
There is a.
Yeah, there's policies there as well.
Yeah, we need to fill in the blanks and decide what options. Just gotta insert your name there.
I saw that.
And they're pushing us to have a policy in place. Well, encouraged means we don't have to do it right now.
Well, sorry, it sounds like it's something that's relatively important. So I mean, I. Makes sense that we tackle it at some point. But I mean, if there's enough concerns and questions and. Different ways of reading the same thing, seems like we ought to put a little effort into it. So, yeah, if it's not ready to to come back as a first reading, we'll do a work session on it now, next month or month after and go from there. The other policy we all agreed on, and then that moves us on to reports. And I guess that puts you up, Craig, if you want to talk some more.
July financials, uh we're eleven months through the. Schools fiscal year, um big month of fund balance increase for July, thankfully. It's also the reason, one of the reasons for that is it's the first month of the state's fiscal year, so. They give us uh twelve and a half percent in portionment. Um ten percent next month. So again, I'm hoping that uh planning for the fund balance to drop just a little bit, but we'll have to see. There's still a lot of grants and all those things that we have to uh clean up and. But the good news is, if you look um at at the graph, our revenue is now ninety percent. Of what the budget has been and our expenditures are at eighty seven percent of the budget. So. We've jumped the previous months, uh we were lower compared to the other years. In revenue and higher for. Pretty close to the expenditures, but uh we we kind of flipped that for for the month of July. Uh so that's, that's really good news on on that uh point. You won't see another report like this probably till the first of November takes. You know, pretty much the month of October to to clean up, uh not clean up, that's not the right word, but. To adjust the financials to the actual. And then uh then we start doing the same process again, you know, and so you won't see really a financial report. For uh September till we get the year enclosed. So, you know, the other, the other funds are uh pretty much moving along. Um. One thing that's interesting and I'll just throw this at you real quickly is. You'll see on the uh the debt service, again, this is. Just the concept is board authorizes and gives us the expenditures. Um we're ninety nine point nine percent spent in. The debt service funds, so that's pretty close. And transportation vehicle fund. Uh we got two hundred and seventy four dollars left. The appropriation, so that's pretty close.
Quarter tank of gas on the bus and we're broke.
Yes, my my what concerned me is that.
That was good.
And maybe you know this, the sales tax rate in Proster went up a tenth of a percent. In starting in July from eight point six to eight point seven. And we didn't purchase the bus until August, so that extra little. You know, a couple hundred bucks, but it still uh made me a little bit nervous that we were gonna have enough capacity there, but. But we made it and uh we're we're good to go. So that's really all that I have unless you have some specific questions uh for July. And maybe one other last point, uh just to bring up, um we did uh. Go out to bid for our fuel. And uh it's interesting to me is that. Two years ago, we went out to bid. And we've got for so from Bliles, it was cost plus a margin of three point nine cents. Um Bliles was the only one that gave us a bid this time. And twenty five cents above margin or margin. Uh so I guess my recommendation is that we don't accept that bid and we. Go out and get some other ones or, you know, loves or, you know. Blais was the only one that gave us the bid, so.
We were kind of taken aback because we could have rolled the contract, right, to to. Upon mutual agreement.
Yeah, so the way the contract is was written is, you know, we accept the contract for year one. Mutual agreement, we can roll it for year two, mutual agreement, we can roll it for year three. I mean, they could, and we're now starting year three. They could have said, yeah, we don't, you know, no, but year two, they said, yeah, we'll go ahead and roll it, but.
But it went from cost, cost plus five cents to cost plus twenty five cents. And so that was a pretty. Pretty big increase to us. And so uh internally, our conversation has been to reject the bid. And to go out and ask people, like solicit bids and ask people, hey, is there any way that. That you can work with Proster School District and develop a partner on this. And so um, yeah. And if there's nobody in town, then maybe we look in different communities. Um for providers and, you know, as long as it's uh reasonable, so.
The other option is get your own tank, but that's a lot of, you know, that's.
There's a lot of logistics involved.
Above ground tank, I mean, it's, it's messy.
It is, yeah.
I know.
Yeah, we talked about.
Also right for theft.
Yeah, you know, we had talked one time about.
Internal controls and blocks and cards and all that stuff.
Developing a transportation cooperative with Patterson. And um the state has money. So if they, you know, if we were to build a new bus barn, there's like a ninety percent match on it. So if we put up like a million dollars, we'd almost get, you know, one point nine to build something like that. And with that, if you have a transportation cooperative, you can even leverage more money. And some of that money can be used for like supplies. And so we were talking about getting a little uh pup tank and then. Uh, you know, driving it up to Spokane or whatever. And and we could bid it at a cheaper rate because it would, it would broaden our, you know, our reach. And then um using it for Patterson and Proster, but uh they weren't as interested in it as we were and didn't see the advantages in it. But actually, it could be, we could drop the cost pretty significantly if if we looked, you know, looked at. Long term sustainable solutions like that.
There was some strings that went along with the the co-op thing and one of, well, not strings, I shouldn't say that. But they would also pay for like some shop space and entire shop area and things of that nature. And we would then have to, not have to. But good service.
We used Patterson used to um get uh their buses serviced. And um Ray told us you're put a stop to that. Phil Peterson, uh we had a little bit working. Working situation with uh with between Proster and Patterson.
Yeah, I've been working with Joe. There is some talk about maybe having um um joint board meeting. Um so we can kind of talk through some things, but really trying to find win wins for both of our districts, right? Um and things that are mutually beneficial around cost savings. Uh having worked in a small district before. Um when we talk about tight financial times, oftentimes in a small districts, uh in a small district. Uh it's even more austere, um and times are more simple and they just don't. It's tough to accrue the same amount of money and have a huge budget, well, you know, pay. Um to have a huge, huge amount of cash reserves and budget, um just because the numbers involved, so.
That's all I have.
Alrighty, Matt, you're up. I just had a couple of things. Um Amy, uh well, I'll start with. Um Monday, Kim Bolt and I were able to um meet and greet some new teachers. She walked them through the induction. I know that Deanna's been working with new teachers and doing some P D around the district as well, and she'll probably share that with you. Amy will be in town, her new business manager on Monday, uh providing that her travels go well. Um we've talked before about student board reps. I know that um as soon as the school year starts, uh Principal Bailey will. Will identify some students and we can do the interview process and get some student voice on our board. Um and then Star School is just right around the corner. Um I was in K R V today. Uh it's still, uh there still needs to be some organization um that has to take place there, but. Uh our buildings are looking nice. And there are a couple of little things that we're gonna try and do this next year. Um one of them was tetherball poles at the middle school. Uh we're working on either making those or purchasing of them. Um Principal Benio's, uh the doors at Old Proster High School, which we heard about tonight. Um Kevin Gilman's on that. And then looking at kind of a goal and goalpost for a practice football field. Um they have these soccer goals that actually are uprights as well. Um and so getting something out there so that. Uh our place kickers um can practice as well as girls and guys soccer to use um. The goals as well, or people can access that field on maybe uh Saturdays or Sundays if they wanna um play a game of soccer. So that's all I had um tonight for the board. Uh if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Deanna, it's all yours.
I have actually quite a few things, but I'll talk fast. Um I did receive a little competitive grant to support homeless students. And I wrote it to support students through the summer. Um Erica Alvarez has been a connect working during the summer to connect with all of our homeless. Students and our families. Um so we're not only able to provide them with some financial support or like school supplies or if they're doing a student activity and they need. You know, shoes or something like that, but also she's working really intently with our high schoolers to make sure. That we are addressing their needs if they're credit deficient, if they need to be in some courses, um maybe they, you know, need some extra support and she. Uh specifically is working with the counselors to make sure those students um have their needs met for the coming year. She's been doing a great job. Um I did have new, we did have new teacher induction last Friday, where that's led by myself and our instructional coaches. And um our focus, um us aside from getting to know the district, um we do do a little scavenger hunt where they kind of go out and. Get some pictures and some things and they learn the district because we have teachers that come from their tracities and they never know where some of the schools are. Um it was a little faster this year because they didn't have to drive to Witstran, but anyway, uh we focus on our classroom environment. And um the culture they build in their classroom and building student relationships and really focusing on. How how what they do and say impacts students and how important it is. Um that they build those student relationships and really get to know their kids. And um so that was really good. We had a. A good group this year. They were a little quiet. Last year's group was a little more boisterous, but um but I think we've got some some really good new new staff members. Um we did just finish up two days of social emotional learning training. Tammy and I are. Uh I think running on fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hour days this whole week um and part of last week, so we're both kind of tired. But we're we're doing it. Um we had, you know, that also focused on building the teacher and student relationships that. Addresses so many needs in a classroom as well as helps kids access learning when that relationship is solid. Um Jessica Wallace and Robin Buck came and did that training with all of our teachers over two days, teachers, counselors, principals, all of our certified staff attended. Um we just had today, all day, um our ARC, our American Reading Company training for our brand new K five. E L A curriculum, English and Spanish curriculum for all of our teachers, our teachers and our principals and coaches. Um uh their materials, we were able to get the materials for the training, but of course, like everything else, our supply chain, but. We're expecting five hundred to six hundred boxes the first day or two of school. Um I have a crew that's gonna work on that. We're gonna get all those materials out to the teachers, but there's, there's a lot of challenges. Teachers are. Our stress right now, they usually are anyway when school is starting. We have our, three of our schools, it's the moving and the. The construction and everything has been super challenging. Um I, Jody and I, I I visit. Uh the New Heights Elementary multiple, uh many times a week, um but I I was assured by Dan. Was it two days ago? We are telling me we will be able to start school. And said, yes. Okay, so um River View is that we don't really have any issues with occupancy at River View. But there were several things that had to be addressed at the heights to gain our occupancy for school to start and he is certain that that is going to happen. Um it's, it's, it's.
Better than I thought it was gonna be.
It is better if you. It is better. If you, if you go in there, it is better. It is tough on the teachers. It's very hard on them, um, because you know, they can't. Like put everything where it's supposed to be, or maybe something in their room isn't quite finished, or there's no ceiling tiles. All that's supposed to be done, and I am there. Multiple times a week. I mean, what's happening here? What's going on with this? Um, and uh, Jody's there every day. Jody's texting me and sending me pictures all the time.
No, he just wants to go the other way, if you know. That's nothing.
It's not running the other way, but it's, it's, this has been very, a very challenging.
Last time I talked to Dan about it, I was convinced. Last time I talked to Dan, I was convinced we were gonna get to September and he was gonna say October.
No.
That's what I said, it's better than I thought.
We talked about.
Yeah, he's been driving up.
No, it's happening, right, Jody?
We are, and on that, can I, can I, can I be part of this, since I will be now. I think that's a big thing with, you know, Deanna, Deanna's talking about heights being, is, um, I know I've had to let go of. My vision of how it should look. You know, everything should be done, everything is in the way, everything should be perfect. And about the struggle for me because, you know, we only get to do this once, the brand new building. The way I'm envisioning it. And so I think that um, my teachers have done a, the normal job that we need. They, they really have. I had someone ask me today, how are your teachers doing? And I was like, you know what? They're doing great, you know, like, because no one has come, no one's tried, you know, at least me. Uh, no one's gotten upset. They've done a great job, but blowing with the blow. And uh, so I think that that's, you know. Maybe prepping people like I'm envisioning this way, it may not be.
Yeah, hurting, but it, but it gets, it's gonna get there.
It's gonna get there. Oh, absolutely. And it really is a beautiful school.
And I do really think that, and it's not just for the teachers that are in the three buildings that have been dealing with this move and construction and everything. All of our teachers, we, we should do a special trade or something for them the first day of school, um, with, it's. It, it's been a little bit of a long haul and um, it's not quite over, but it will be soon. So that's all for me.
Alrighty, Lisa.
Well, let's kind of roll into, roll into that, um, and go out of the order of my list. I know there was discussion about posting potentially another fourth grade teacher and that we have class sizes at thirty and thirty one for fourth. And that's every fourth grade class except.
I have two, for fourth grade, I have two thirty and one.
At what point do we say, yeah, we're listing a fourth grade teacher or we're passing? I, I, I'm.
We'd already posted anticipated fourth grader. But I thought we were gonna post it so we would be ready. I, maybe I'm wrong, that was that wrong?
Yeah, we talked about anticipated or getting the posting ready to go, so we could post it right away. Um, if it's anticipated, you can always back off of it. So.
Thank you, that, I think, I think that would be great. And how, how many cubbies are in each classroom? Do you know that? We want every kid to have a cubby.
The cubbies will be okay because um, there's two hooks, there's two, I mean, we can make it work. It's not ideal. You're right, it's not ideal. But I don't think we can bring in more cubbies.
No.
So we'll have to make some adjustments, uh.
You've got, you have a lot, those rooms have a lot of cubbies.
Thank you. Um, I didn't know if there was follow up and we got the, the choice out numbers. That we talked about at the beginning of the meeting. No, no, that's, that's okay. We forget, get that information. Thank you. And then in follow up, I think we should have a discussion about providing support for Annika so she can do a good job. Um, I know that, and this is gonna tie into my next topic, if you go to um. The website right now and say, contact the school counselor and you click, click on that link, it gives you um, Mrs. Ledesma's email. So I think that needs to be updated and I don't know if anyone's checked that email, but goes to Annika. And then following on that, I think we need to audit all our websites district wide because there's a lot of. Outdated information, contact information, names, emails. I don't know if those emails get checked or, but I think. That's something that needs to be, I know Sean is busy right now. I don't know, that needs to fall to her.
He's not even here.
But.
Individually, the buildings do that, update those, so, and I've also sent emails like, hey, this needs to be fixed, this needs to be changed, but I haven't looked at all the pages, so.
I think that's, you know, when we talk about people saying that we need to improve communication, that's. Have accurate information is a, a good, a good start there. It's important. Um. Oh, it's, okay, so I'll continue on communication. Um, there was discussion, I know some bus routes are collapsing. And I had asked um, on the social media site, um, can we do a bus route map? And I think it was a bus driver that responded that said, that's not, that's not possible, but I had some other parents say, well, why isn't that possible? Isn't there like a map, you know, a map that we could say, or just the information, if you, you know, or your description, if you live. East of Johnson Road and you live here, this is your route, that's available, that we can post that. So people can see it. Um, I had two parents that said, we tried calling the bus garage today. I know everybody is busy, but they said their calls didn't get answered, but on the social, the school social media site, it does say. Call and we'll tell you where your bus route is. Please don't wait till the first day.
Amy, like we used, that's information used to get published in the newspaper, I think.
She has a mapping software, so it assumes that you can print something.
Yeah, I would think so.
And that would, you know, that would reduce phone calls, that would be good. And then I wanted to just talk about last week's meeting on the seventeenth. I thought the discussion at the end of the meeting with Jody and Brian and Michael and Crystal was the best discussion. That we've had since I've been on the board. I loved hearing about, you know, what's working at your schools, what you thought regarding dress code and. Um, discipline, I thought that was such a good conversation. I love that Mr. Denny focused on. You know, we need to look at the data and what's happening at the middle school, not necessarily what we're hearing. But look at the data, and I thought that was such an impassionate and accurate statement, and he did such a good job talking about that. I just thought it was outstanding and I. Would love if we could incorporate. Um, maybe having like first grade teachers come when meeting or second, you know, high school teachers that alternate that to hear, you know, what. You know, what's working, what isn't working, what, what they need. And I think that's, you know, maybe through the work sessions and do it that way. I think that would be such a good way. To hear from them and so we can make good decisions based on what's going on for them. And that is my report. Oh, have a great first day of school, everybody. I had that up here with a circle around it. Have a great year, have a great first day.
Jeannie.
Okay, I didn't have a lot. I'm sometimes fascinated by some of the calls I get. I actually. Got a call from somebody saying, well, should my kid just show up at football practice? Well, let me find out about that for you, you know, uh, but mostly uh. Just general things going on. I did sit in on the interviews for the new uh. Maintenance director today. I always find those interesting and they, they are getting busy at the bus garage. Yeah, got to talk to Amy today. But that's about it.
I uh, I will not say that I, I think the high school and, and the other buildings, but particularly the high school and the uh, athletic department. Have done a great job of posting on social media. What uh, what kids can expect, when to be at meetings, when schools wouldn't start, what uh. Um, what they need, what parents need, uh, and um. I'm not on social media either often, but when I do go on, it's, it's right there. It's, you know. Like tonight's meeting for all athletes, it was, uh, it was posted and it was right there and what you need to bring and. And um, I thought that was really good information and so I, I really have seen it an up. Uh, an increase in that positive information that's going out, especially from my school, so thank you, Brian. That, that's really. It looked like when I went out to the bathroom, they had a good turnout out there.
Pardon me?
It looked like they had a really good turnout at their.
Yeah.
And then um, also I, I uh, worked with Jeannie today and with uh. Matt and on the interview process for the new maintenance person. Uh, maintenance and uh, groundskeeper supervisors, so that was kind of an interesting process. And I've been representing the district on the Pita Board, so been busy with that.
Uh, a couple of things, um. Where are we at on the HMS Chillers? I know one's completely gone, one's limping along, um. Have we looked at, you know, getting those bid, whether it's complete repair or replacement, I'd hate for. Something to go out again in those rooms get, you know, ninety, eighty-five, ninety degrees.
Actually asked Mark Bishop about that today, and he said that uh, Peggy and Jeannie were there. He said that all of them. Have been replaced, they need to be replaced, and on top of that, they've also, him and Terry McCombs have cleaned them. And so that actually, they're cleaning them and they hadn't been cleaned for years. Um, kind of creates more efficiencies within that.
Don't we pay Apollo a maintenance agreement to come do stuff like that?
I don't know that we do, um.
We pay them an awful lot.
Yeah, in fact, in fact, that, yeah, that was one of the questions today about preventative maintenance, preventative maintenance plans. So the example, the example I gave was filters. Right? We have new drinking fountains and their water dispensers as well. Will those have a filter? HVAC, you know, systems have filters. And so when we talk about how many filters are there within the district and then. When are they gonna go out? You know, you don't wait until they go out, you replace them before, and so really tracking those um timelines. And so having a preventative maintenance plan where you're saying, it's just like changing the oil in your car. You know, don't try and drive it until it's smoking. You know, get it changed before, you know, the, the date on the sticker says. But, yeah, and so he said that they've been replaced. He said that they've cleaned them, so I, I. Asked him again, kind of in a different format, I said, so the AC is operating at full speed. Right? Like i- it's cold over there. It's, it's cool. He goes, yeah, it is.
Okay, um, thank you. Then my next one follow up would be the old high school. Um, I know it's a complete can of worms anyways, but I know that I've heard the upstairs. Rooms are about ninety degrees over, I think, last week. I know Kevin's gone, but uh.
Yeah.
Um, what are we gonna do to mitigate some of that?
Yeah, um, we can do, I, I think the first strategy would be to, if you can schedule. Classes on the ground level and out in different areas, then that's probably like the first strategy. To say, you know, Witstrand's a smaller, smaller building. Um, so to say, you know, do we have to use the upstairs where it's hot? And then you can look at fans and swamp coolers and things like that. I've um. I've inquired, you know, and initially these portable air conditioning units were, they were abandoned. Because it was, um, do you want to tap into bond funds and spend, you know, like a hundred thousand dollars on updating the AC unit? And now, you know, who would have known that? On the back end of the pandemic, it would have been like, well, yeah, you guys are gonna be strapped for cash to even finish that Witstrand project. So even though it wasn't, you know, like, we've struggled along with it, um. It was a decent decision, I think, at the time, and so we just have to make it through one more year. And especially this hot season and maybe even the spring if it gets hot. And so, um. Yeah, so I think that those, that's kind of the plan of attack. If we don't have to schedule it on the, on the second floor, don't. And then on the first floor, you know, let's look into fans or swamp coolers. Um, when Brian was there and it got, you know, when those things were now, we were doing free, you know. Get, I think he went down to uh, the hardware store and got these big troughs of like ice water and. Yeah, really. Yeah, so was anything.
They rolled in and there was one of those icy things, but it's a hundred degrees in the room.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Um, thank you for that, um. Strategic planning, I know we keep talking about it, it keeps coming up, um. Routinely, I would like to have it. Not completed, but at least having the process started by the end of September. I think we keep, we keep professing and talking about it, we're not doing anything.
Yeah.
And we can't move forward with some of the stuff that was said tonight until we have a plan of attack, you know.
Yeah, I contacted that Waz consultant and kind of sent her um, the outline of her services. Uh, I do think it's important to have somebody facilitate it. The reason I, I think that is, um. So number one, everybody can participate. And then number two, it's a fresh set of eyes. And so it's somebody who's never looked at your district's data before, never been um, in the culture before, and so. They actually, by being involved in that whole process, can actually try and push on some things. Uh, one of the beauty of consultants is they can say things that oftentimes people internally. Yeah, yeah, and so, um, they can bring issues to light, and so, uh, this guy was somebody that was to recommend. Um, she is big, I'll say that she is. Uh, in talking with her, she is big on student achievement. And so that's her metric of school success. Um, you know, we have other components where we could ask her to include. Um, which would be like a facilities plan and just a service plan, right? Um, I think. Yeah, in my mind, when we look at strategic planning, there's different ways to evaluate a system. Um, as we've talked about before, what's, what does employee satisfaction look like? What is the customer experience look like? Are students and, are students and family saying that they really enjoy the education? Um, are teachers saying it's the best place to work beyond the high achievements, right? And so even though, I mean, I get faulted with a lot, um, you know, it could be the superintendent's fault. But a lot of those issues transcend, you know, um, a superintendent's reach.
Well, I don't want to beat this up because we've already been here for two, a long time.
Yeah.
Um, but I just think if, if you have a proposal from us, let's put it on the agenda, we approve it, we approve it. If we don't, we can at least.
Okay.
That's my, my suggestion.
Absolutely agree.
Lastly, and I'm, I'm gonna skip and just not do everything. So I'm gonna piggyback on Lisa's idea. Um, that she had uh, earlier today, but I do think as a board, as we get through school. That we go through all the vote board governance policies, make sure those are updated. Uh, and, and fresh as we go into this next school year and then, and beyond. That's it. Thanks.
Alright, so I don't have a whole bunch, uh. Number one, I'm not on social media, so I have no idea what the first three of you were talking about when it comes to buses or anything else that was put out on our. On our social media site. Uh, I actually would like to echo what Elisa said about Annika Schroder. I think uh, some extra support would be a, a solid move. Uh, and I would like to piggyback on that. I think we should probably uh, talk to Mr. Reynolds here about a few extra days helping Amy out when she gets here. I think that would be money well spent. Um, and then the only interesting part of this would be Witstrand. Uh, I've been out a few times in the last few weeks, footings are poured, uh, pipings in. They uh, they actually thought I was the electrical inspector today and guys were all happy and I'm like, sorry to disappoint you, but hard no. Um, and then I asked about the portables, um. There are five twenty-four by sixties. And they are, if you want them, take them. They apparently couldn't find any takers, so they have about two and a half weeks and they're gonna get. Smashed and put in dumpsters.
My son's company, the uh, Volt House had asked about, apparently they asked about getting a couple of.
Put them in contact with me.
Do you need to surplus them?
Yes, I guess they tried and they didn't get any takers.
No, I, I think that's part of the contract, so technically it's that's Chervinell's hand.
Yeah, I can, I can work through it with him.
And he can connect him with Chervinell.
Okay, yeah.
And then actually, I was gonna piggyback on that. If we, if we found out how much they cost to move, and I'm guessing that prevailing wages, which is what we pay. Uh, it probably wouldn't be, wow, but if there's five of them there and there's only a couple that are wanted. They're, they were in pretty decent shape, although I'm sure at this point the fixtures have been pulled out, things of that nature.
They're, they were in pretty decent shape, although I'm sure at this point the fixtures have been pulled out, things of that nature. But over at, uh. Uh, houses, you know, you had those two. Rat crap things. Was it three? Thought it was only two. Anyway, it would be awesome if those were smashed and put in dumpsters and we took the ones from Witstrand and put them in.
Updated them.
Yeah, even if it's just storage or like, uh. Development space or. What's there was, I mean, they used to have skunks in them and they were nasty. Yeah, so something to think about, and yeah, Peggy, he's, yeah. Get them, cause they, they got like. I'm assuming the way they're set up, at least three of them could be left standing without any. As long as they're spoken for and, you know. Yeah, no worries. And same, same thing, if they, if they want something at the gun club. There's, there's three big ones and one small one in there. They'll have to figure out a way to home. I would suggest Mitch Mesky has the cheapest route, but. Can play that one however you want. So, that's all I got. Uh, anybody else got anything interesting you wanna talk about? And we will be taking a five-minute recess. We are gonna go into an executive session. It'll take approximately an hour, and then I have to read the whole thing that goes with it to review the performance of a public employee, employee. No action to follow, R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero. Uh, in parentheses, one G, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment to review the performance of a public employee. However, subject to the same R C W. Oh, no, it's not. Uh, R C W forty-two thirty, one forty, and in parentheses, for discussion by governing body, salary, wages, other conditions of employment. To be generally applied with the agency, shall, shall, in a meeting. I can't be open to the public if it's executive.
No. No, they're saying any approval of.
Uh, will be open to the public, governing body elects to take final action, action in hiring. Settle, settling the salary of an individual employee, class of employees, discharging discipline. And open to the public. Alright, guys, thank you. Yeah, and then our next, uh, meeting will be the thirty-first. It's a special meeting here, six o'clock.